and owners of governments. Your Excellency, our visits started. We've been here for about fourteen days, I mean eleven days. And we went to Zone E, our first port of call. Is it Zone C? Zone C. We were in Zone C. We went as far as the road from Igumale to Addo. Went to the other road to Oju. We also went to to Otobi Waterworks to see how the place is. We'll come back someday hopefully to see how it will be transformed. We have seen green areas for agriculture. We have seen a number of determined efforts for progress. We have seen a few schools and health centers in in Otoku. We went to Akegede and I've seen an ongoing project there. And believe me, ladies and gentlemen, Benue State is a land of possibilities. Nobody should tell you that you have potentials. You have gone beyond potentials, that is why you are Benue State. You have possibilities. There is everything you need to get what you want, to empower your people and become the shining example of progress in the middle belt. And we have seen that the governor, Governor Dr Reverend Father Dr. Haesent Yomem Aliyah is introducing a new model, a new model of leadership to enhance good governance and service delivery. If half of what we see is accomplished within time, within budget, I am sure that Benue will be on the road to fulfilling its possibilities within the Nigerian space. And our governor, the governor of Benue State, of course, if I say our governor, you will understand with me because personally I come from Kiana, the neighboring local government. And I speak, I have in-laws here, I have you know, the Idoma speaking people, we are both Koraofah people, so we have connections. So I am rightly, I can come here and claim indignity of Benue State and you will not drive me. And ladies and gentlemen, we also visited some roads around Iju to Ayuhara, sorry, let me put my glasses. Ayuhara. And we also went to Adipo and some other areas and have seen some efforts in Conde and you know, fourteen kilometers here, sixteen kilometers, they are linking communities. That is essential and that is important. Ladies and gentlemen, let me stop here because the Laboran Makho, the Honorable Headmaster will come and give, Headmaster indeed because he was a teacher and he was promoted Headmaster of the primary school in his village before he left. So he will come and give a global picture of what we've seen. Like we will tell you exactly, we are not going to say if Adia did what he didn't do. We will say what we saw. Ours is to encourage you to support the process and achieve the progress that our people need. This is the time, there is too much politics in the air. Let's redirect our direction, our focus to delivering on development. This is key because this is the purpose of government. I want to thank you, Your Excellency and the Honorable Commissioners and all those who are supporting the government to do what it is doing. Let me invite the Honorable Laboran Makho right?
Thank you very much for tuning into NTA. This is just the organizers of the town hall meeting currently ongoing at the old banquet hall at the government house. We are pleased to have you join in our studio in the old government banquet hall for the town hall meeting put together by the Tinbukto Services Limited in collaboration with Office of the Technical Advisor on Media, Publicity and Strategic Communication. This is Laboran Makho, one of the key members of the Tinbukto Media Services Limited organizers of the town hall meeting who is about to present his speech. They have been in Makodi, the Benue State capital and have not just been in the capital. They've been around the three central districts of the state touring around and going to see visible projects executed by the Governor of Benue State right Reverend Dr. Haesent Aliyah. They've been in the state for the past
Haesent Aliyah, heavily represented by my brother, His Excellency the Deputy Governor of Benue State, Honorable Sam Ode, my colleague in the Federal Executive Council. Members of Benue State Executive Council, Special Advisors, Director General of Agencies and Development of Government, URI harnesses, our traditional rulers, distinguished government functionaries at all levels, distinguished citizens of Benue State, our women, our youth, members of the civil society organizations who are present in this hall, my colleague reporters, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. I'm highly delighted to return to Benue State on another tour of government programs and efforts by democracy to impact the lives of our people. You recall that in 2013, I came here as City Minister of Information on a national good governance tour under the then Governor Soswam. I went around this whole state, virtually on looks and crannies of Benue State to report what I saw, therefore being made by the then administration to improve the lives of the people. It is over ten years now and government is a continuum. Different administrations have come and gone. We are now in a new era of yet another governor elected by the people of Benue State. This time around, a Reverend Father Adat, the second Reverend Father, to assume the leadership of our state after the late Reverend Father Adasun. We must congratulate the people of Benue State for bringing forth servants of God to join us, the politicians to provide leadership for the state. As you all know, democracy is everybody's business. It does not matter your profession. You can be a tailor, you can be a headmaster like me, you can be a farmer, you could be a doctor, an academic. It is your right to participate in politics. Government of the people, by the people and for the people. All professionals are invited to participate in politics. I know how the church used to think that politics is not for the people of God. And so most of the time, people believe that the politics is too dirty for everybody to participate. You know, Christ came and died, he came and went through all kinds of places to bring all people. I therefore think it is important that everybody in society should take interest in politics. I must congratulate Governor Aliyah for taking the courage to step from the pool filter onto the soapbox. This indeed is something that everybody is watching around the nation to see how God will use him to impact the people of Benue State. So when he asked us to come and take a look at what he's doing, it was our conviction that we must come. As you know, I'm fourth and foremost a reporter, a journalist. It is from that journalism that arose to be what it has been in our country. From Commissioner for Information to Deputy Governor to Minister of Information and Communication and Minister of Defence. What gave me the privilege to go through this, together with my brother Sam Ode when the Federal Cabinet will present Good Lord Jonathan. Now we are here on the different dispensations. Now, Dr. Mary and I and quite a number of journalists in the country have been concerned about the approach of journalism to reporting democracy. Most of the time, what we report is often about queries between politicians. This party will run down that, that party will bring down that, that personality because there is a contest. Everybody wants to come and sit on the seat. And so politicians of necessity will compete, will quarrel, will disagree, will dispute. That is the normal process of democracy is all over the world. You saw it in the just concluded election in the United States last year. So in other words, democracy is a game of disputation, queries, argument between different factions of the political class containing for power. But the most important thing about democracy is the people at the grassroots. The people who may not even speak, the kind of English will speak at this level. The people may just understand, they don't know, they have never heard any word in English. The people may just understand teeth in the localities of Benue State, Oedomo, Ouagatu. They will never be able to make it to government house. For example, our governor will stay here for maybe four years, eight years, depending on the will of the people. There are people in his village that will never come to his office because they don't know the road here. Now we, as reporters, our duty is to draw attention to what government is doing at the grassroots to live the life of our people. And that is why we agree on a program to continue to tour development, to go around the nation, to see what politicians are doing. We are here as development reporters because we believe the most important thing about government is the development, the impact in changing the life of ordinary people. When this is not done, democracy loses its essence, it loses its own meaning. And that is why we have agreed, look, while we, the politicians, will quarrel and struggle and fight, let us, the reporters, let's come down and see what is it that is being done in the midst of queries, in the midst of dispute elections, what is being done for the ordinary people. That is the reason why we have now decided to ensure that this national governance program which we did in government should not be left there. We need to come out completely out of government control to be able to establish a platform where journalists from across the nation can come and monitor development. Because in the end, politicians will come and go. The most important is that the people remain. When a road is done, it is not a PC road, it is no longer Labour Party road, it is not PDP road, it is a road for everybody to follow. And that is why we encourage people to focus on development. Now we are here in Benue State in continuation of that vision we saw long ago that this democracy must deliver services to the people. It must meet and address the needs of ordinary people. It is very important that we never lose sight of why government is in place to secure the lives of people and provide development across sectors. Now we came, when we came, I want to thank His Excellency the Deputy Governor. He received us. We met with the officials of government, the cabinet and directors, people that are responsible for carrying out the programs of Governor Aliyah. We met, we discussed with them and said we'll be going around to see some of the things that we have had. We want to go around and see what is happening. How is the governor trying to advance the course of development? Now democracy works on three pillars. You have the executive, you have the legislature and you also have the judiciary. All these different forms of the same administration, they work in synchrony to deliver services, ensure justice, ensure liberty for the people. And that is why when we came, we tried to go around to see at different levels. Let me say here that we saw that His Excellency Reverend Father Dr. Aliyah has a passion to develop Benue State. And in doing so, he has tried to make interventions about what we have seen in different theaters. And I think the first focus of his administration as we have seen is infrastructure delivery. We have seen that. As Dr. Mary was trying to explain, we may not be able to speak the Tif language or Egede or Idoma or Ouagatu or any of the villages we go there. We've seen that there is an effort to intervene, to provide infrastructure for the people of Benue State. Now, His Excellency has initiated a network of roads in the state. Particularly we saw in Makodi, an attempt at Obah Renewal. And we have seen, we went through some roads in the city, in the GRA, in different parts of Makodi. A lot of those roads have been completed and they are looking fairly good. We went to the Makodi underpass, that's what you call it. It's a major road junction that the governor is doing to maybe to stop, to ease transportation, avoid accidents, you know, and to increase, it's like the business district of Makodi. We saw a lot of banks and infrastructure around it. And that, that really is a very good project, you know, and the road network in Makodi. Our, our, our belief is that each of the thirty-six capitals should end up as modern cities and economic hub for the surrounding region. If you go abroad to great cities like the United States, you'll find that some state economy are above, may not, I think California has the fourth largest economy in the world by GDP. California. Here in Lagos, you'll find that we put Lagos on the average, Lagos is either number five or six economy in Africa. So you see, in other words, if every state focuses in transforming its state capital and local government headquarters, you will become an economic hub. Services, you know, will come from there, investors will come set up and meet the needs of the surrounding communities. So we believe that if Governor Aliyah continues in the network of roads in Makodi to turn this city into a modern city, every governor has been doing it since nineteen ninety-nine and even beyond that. But the development of a country is a continuum, it does not stop. He's trying to add value, to increase the road network, make them motorable and make this capital a modern capital city that will make life easier for people. We don't need to go to Abuja or stay in Lagos. If your state capital is good, we would want to leave Abuja to come and holiday here. That is the way it is in all advanced countries. So we have seen here in Makodi, a resurgent and determined effort by the governor to improve the road network in Makodi and make this city a modern city for the people of Benue State. We have seen that as we went around the city. Now, we also in Boko, we saw another underpass road in Boko and some roads in that area, including the road that passes through from the governor's village down back to Calabar Road. We went through those roads and we saw that they are very good and a network of other rural roads. You know, the reality is that Benue State is a land of agriculture, a land of rural people who engage in agricultural production in different places. What we saw, because it's important, that we don't just focus on the state capital. Because if you focus alone the state capital, what you have in the end, that there will be a population migration from the rural areas onto the state capital. And that is not what we want. We want to be able to get services down to the grassroots so that people can remain where they are and live their life comfortably, produce at the rural areas and supply the city and the rest of the state with the services we need. So those road networks that we saw, please, we are calling on the state government. His Excellency, the Deputy Governor, it would be good to pay attention. It's important that we work with those contractors to see that those roads are executed and delivered. Executed, that there are different levels of work. But the most important, as you know, is that when you start a project, try to deliver it so that the benefits of the investment will add up to improve the life of the people and increase the productivity of the people of Benue State and eventually the GDP of the state. Now, we we also saw here in Makodi, for example, a determined effort by the governor to impact on health services. We went to Benue State University Teaching Hospital. Now, we saw some very, very important interventions there, which are new projects because I was there in twenty thirteen. I also visited Benue State University. This time, we saw a cancer center under construction. A cancer center. Now, according to the Chief Medical Director of Benue State Teaching, University Teaching Hospital, say cancer is about the third cause of death around the world and even in our country. A lot of people die of cancer. Why is this so? Because we don't have enough care, we don't have enough cancer, the capacity, infrastructure, medical capacity to treat cancer. Now, as you see, that cancer center, apart from the National Hospital in Abuja, may be the only other center in the north central of Nigeria. And we saw it, we saw what being done. And oncologist there, he said, he is faithful that by the end, ended next year, that that center will be functional. Please, we are calling on His Excellency and the government to put every effort they can in ensuring that that steady flow of resources to ensure that that center is delivered. Because the surrounding states will be coming here for cancer treatment. If you can do that and deliver it, honestly, it would be a wonderful thing. For the hospitals in Benue State. The center we saw, you know, according to the hospital management, that center will be able to procure drugs directly from an Those are here. The problem we have is getting a genuine drug, whether it's from malaria or dysentery or fever. It is getting a genuine drug in our chemist. Now, being able to procure drugs that will be supervised to ensure that those drugs are authentic will save a lot of lives. There are many people whom go to hospitals or to local clinics, they are given drugs and the drug is said become the source of death. So they buy problem upon the one they took to hospital. Now we want to see that that center is completed and that drugs procured by experts directly from manufacturer at cheaper cost and they say it's a revoking fund. According to them, His Excellency has given two billion naira towards that program to buy drugs, they will sell of course, they will recover the money and the drug will continue, the fund will continue to revoke to provide more medicine for people across Benue State. Again, that's a very, very good project that we have seen. We saw the Center for Special Diseases that had been built, you know, which was a third intervention in that place. Again, there are specialized cases, you know, autism and other kind of diseases where expertise in Nigeria is very limited. And most of the time, people take their children to London, to America, to India. Now, they want to provide for those special cases, some diabetic cases, cases that Lassa fever, again, when it comes, people will be struggling, where to go? So they want the center where there is an outbreak of diseases that are very difficult to manage, you will be prepared to handle them. And when children are born with special cases that need early intervention to save their lives and make them normal, that is the center the governor has set up in the teaching hospital to provide services for the specialized medical services for the children and people of Benue State. Now those three centers we saw are also things we want to say, let the government ensure. They are virtually ready, it's just a matter of now funding, stocking them and getting them to operate. Again, we saw a VIP a VIP medical infrastructure being set up in Benue, in University Teaching Hospital. Understand that, you know, there's a lot of medical tourism of people moving from here to go abroad, you know, for treatment. We saw a special unit in the teaching hospital which is being made for VIPs. You know, there are, you know, people that maybe they have a very important visitor to Benue State. It could be the president, it could be fellow governors who will come and they suddenly foresee, can you are struggling, you wonder where to take them? Again, they are building a center there, we saw it. I believe that if they can complete it, plus the waterworks in the teaching hospital, they are building a special waterwork by the way to supply independent water supply to the teaching hospital. Please, we urge Your Excellency the Deputy Governor and His Excellency the Governor and all those involved to work hard to ensure that they deliver on those services. Now going from there, we went into, you know, Benue State is you call yourself, we call you, the nation call you the bread basket, the food basket, the food basket, the food basket of Nigeria. Now we saw that, we saw an effort by the governor to provide some mechanized services to the people. We saw a tractor assembly plant here, working together with the private sector, with the private sector and a company from India. We saw it under the Office of Wealth Creation Director General. They have been able to establish when they are, we saw tractors that are already assembled and those that are under, you know, and in the process of being assembled to be provided, to provide mechanized agro services to farmers at the grassroots. And to the governor has a special program of making sure ordinary farmers have access to those tractors. Now again, that for is the capacity of our farmers to increase food production, not just for the people of Benue State, but also for the nation as a whole. So we saw that and it's indeed a very good intervention. Now, in terms of industry, we saw the Benue State Investment Yes, the investment, Benue State Investment and Property Company. You know, they took us to a number of commercial ventures that they are starting to boost economic activities and employment in the state. And interestingly, we went to two waterworks, you know, and honestly, throughout what we saw, and we saw a lot of people lined up buying, you know, water for the people. Those ventures cannot fail if you stand by them and they are already in production. Then they took us to two bakeries that the BIB PC have set up. And we saw quite a number of people, women lined up, youths buying bread for distribution. And I think again, that the kind of intervention that can quickly connect with cassava which ride that you produce in Benue, the next challenge will be for the government to set up, create the fund to establish a flour mill so that the products, the ingredients for that bread should not come from anywhere. It should come from the farmers of Benue State for backward integration to increase, you know, the development of our state. We also went to an orange processing plants, which again is being established by the state government. They are almost at the point of, you know, take off. Now, these interventions will create jobs, will provide services, will will backward integration for people who are in farming to increase the wealth of the people of Benue State. We also went to a beer brewery, we went to a brewery on the Ziba, is it? Uh, because in the Second Republic, it need to be more, more. Now, we went to Ziba. Again, that, these, these five, uh, four or five projects now, established in two years, are commendable. Now, you have to put your eyes on the ball. But, but what I will say here is that we have seen this in the past, we saw more. When I came here, I went to another, um, uh, fruit processing plant on the Soson. They call it, um, Terra, Terra, eh? Terrago Processing Plant. Now you can see it's not active now. Now, what I will advise the government of Benue State, let these factories never remain under government control. If they do, after one or two, three governments, they will collapse. Because there is a problem with government managing things like that. Everybody, where governor Alia has good intention now, he have, he has employed competent people who are managing now. You don't know what will happen next. So the best thing is to prepare a program to flow to them. People buy shares and transfer them under private sector control and then government can own shares and then take the profit from those factories. The most important thing is to, you know, um, flag off industrialization. Government had the resources to put and then you leave them back to the people to manage so that they become re businesses that will continue to add value. I must not, uh, we, we went to, um, Benue Transport Company, Benue Link. We saw also some very good intervention. We saw the premises paved and then we saw quite a fleet of vehicles that have been bought to beef up, to ease the transport situation, especially in the light of the subsidy withdrawal and so on. And so I must say that, um, we saw those projects. The Benue Link Company, especially giving the cost, is very, very important that you keep it going. Finally, I must say that we believe that two years is half time. So the governor has to push to make sure that one, most of the projects under construction are completed. It will add value to the people of Benue State. Then we must ensure that we expand intervention to every nook and cranny. More intervention is on C, more intervention is on A. One of the, the, the challenge of government is balance, to make sure that you carry everybody along and you distribute opportunities and resources evenly so that people from all the three city districts will rise, you know, as one person, as a united front to ensure the unity and development of Benue State. Let me emphasize here, we are here under some stories of insecurity. And let me say it here. Security is a challenge in Benue State, in Natural State, in Taraba State, in Plato State, in Sada Kadduna, in Niger, in Katina, in Zamfara, in Kilby, in the whole of the North East. It has become endemic. Let me say that as a son of this zone, as a son of this zone, North Central Nigeria, I'm appealing, using this platform to appeal to our people. This is the period where you have to be sensitive, work together, you know, cooperate with security agencies and the government to ensure that when something happens, you nip it in the ball. But often above this, the federal government has a responsibility to us as a people to secure this region because if North Central Nigeria continues to be destabilized, nobody will improve the Nigerian economy. Because the food that sustain this nation comes from this zone. We must take special interest in the security of this zone. And we going on like this for a while and note the effort, the kind of expenditure state government are spending in supporting police, supporting army, supporting security, buying vehicles. We need to bring this insecurity to a close. And this can be done by the federal government standing up because we, we must stand up, security agency must stand up and put, there's no way that these people be stronger than our security forces. We need to make sure we stand up and bring it to an end because that is what is going to lead to sustainable development of Benue State and North Central Nigeria. Thank you very much indeed, as I said, this is the beginning of our visit. We'll be coming hopefully again, you know, um, after a year or so to see what the disclosure on the project have been listed. And these activities are according, primary education, healthcare, all of it, there are interventions that we have seen. We are praying that the government will put his eyes on the ball and ensure that we move and complete those initiatives that have started because abandoned project is a major problem in Nigeria. We should start what we are able to finish so that in the end, we add value to the people of Benue State. Thank you indeed for your attention. Uh, it's your state, we are simply here to report what we have seen and we are valuable, everywhere we go, we're interested in the reporting development. Please double up commissioners, everybody in government and the people to lift your if a government fail, it is too terrible. When a government fail, living standards come down, people die at all kinds of crisis. Every government should succeed, that is our prayer. And then we'll be moving forward as a nation. Thank you very much for the attention of giving.
That was Laboran Mako, former Minister of Information and Culture and one of the chief executives of the Invo2 Media Solutions Limited that have put together this town hall meeting. His Excellency, the Deputy Governor of Benue State just giving a handshake to Mr. Laboran Mako. He is standing in for the Executive Governor of Benue State. Reverend Dafai Dalia is unavoidably absent, but is being expected. This town hall meeting has brought people from all walks of life to have an interface with the Executive Governor of Benue State. Reverend Dr. Fadai Sda Dalia seated at the high table. Is the Deputy Governor of Benue State, Dr. Sam Ode, Laboran Mako, commissioners and senior government officials. Also, participants at the town hall meeting includes local government council chairman across the two interlocal areas of Benue State, members of the Benue State House of Assembly, heads of ministries, departments and agencies, traditional rulers, captains of industry, labor union groups, Muslim and Christian clerics, youth, women and market groups associations, high court judges, retired judges of Benue State, cultural groups, members of the National Union of Road Transport Workers amongst others. So you could see that the town hall meeting held at the old banquet hall of the government house Makodi today cut across every strata of the society. And like I tell you, it is more or less an interactive session where the governor throws out his activities, achievements and plans in the years ahead while he sits and get feedback from the people. People ask questions and also get explanations from great areas. Commissioner for Transport and Energy Barista Omalo Omale is on the podium to make a speech.
Executive Governor of Benue State, Reverend Dr. Onemelia, now represented by his amiable Deputy Governor, Chief Dr. Sam Ode Emeni. All protocols duly observed, with special tributes to the traditional fathers, the Ochidoma Gaba Idu and the representative of Tote. Uh, my name is Omale Omale, Commissioner for Power, Renewable Energy and Transport in the Benue State Government led by Reverend Dr. High sent here on Emelia. The Ministry for Us is a new ministry, um, established or set up by this administration to align state policy to national thoughts. A Ministry of Power became necessary following the unbundling of power sector in Nigeria and then, uh, allowing for states to set up their energy market and then open up electricity or granting energy assets to the people of the state. Uh, again, to pay special attention to the transport sector in Benue State, it became necessary for the government to size, uh, Ministry, I mean, the Directorate of Transportation from the then Ministry of Works and Transport to now warehouse it with Ministry of Power, Renewable Energy. Uh, we have under the watch of his governor, through his support, been able to set up a policy framework for power sector in Benue State as well as the transport sector in Benue State. Uh, when the governor at Zoom Office, he, he, he saw the need to light up the town and then, um, then under the Ministry of Science, Tech and Energy, there was this intervention that Chief Yupay spoke of that as you move through our urban city at night, face one of it has lined up Makodi and face two of it is carefully drawn up to reach out to the suburb. And again, uh, to bridge up energy assets, the government has also graciously caused intervention in, uh, network expansion that we have done working closely with, um, a just electricity distribution company that now inform the relatively stable power for the people of Benue State for commercial and domestic use. And again, to strengthen transport services for the people of Benue State, the government under Yonem Aliyah saw the need again to strengthen the then moribund Benue Links, to using it as a model, uh, sample for transport sector in Benue State. Promptly, there was that intervention by, uh, of 100 buses that now stabilizes the prices of, uh, uh, transportation within and outside Benue State. Uh, we have also introduced logistics intervention following, uh, incessant reports of missing, um, loads or luggages of commuters. So if you go to Benue Links, we now have logistics armed that ferry goods from one point to another. See, if that is not enough, we have also explored intercity fleet services wherein, uh, smaller taxi are now deployed to Benue Links for those who want VIP services within and outside Makodi. And in the transport sector too, I'm pleased to inform us that we are desirous of exploring all the means of transportation there are in Benue State, leveraging on River Benue that is here with us. Uh, as the water upscale, we will be deploying the fleets that we already got. Uh, we have acquired four fiberglass boats to extend to the waterways so that we can explore water transportation that we are committed to bring to fruition as we hit the month of June. Ladies and gentlemen, it is our privilege again as a government to extending and coordinating transport related activities for the state government, procure and secure a state owned terminal or transport terminal at the center city of Nigeria, Abuja. As we speak now, Benue State Government have our own state terminal from where we have take our transport business to every part of the country. Um, yes, on a very serious note, let me reassure the people of Benue State that when we came, uh, there were skeleton air services that went extinct. Uh, we have had discussion with top air, um, operators and we have their commitment that in no distant time, we will also reopen the air travel for the people of Benue State so as to cause the right traction. That is a commitment of the Benue State Government and we are, we assure the people of Benue State and Nigeria that as the government drive to open up investment corridor for us in Benue State, air transport will also be made available. And finally, finally, in an effort to bridge energy gap, the Benue State Government have also gone into partnership with the Rural Electification Agency of Nigeria. We are, I mean, uh, EHR program was unveiled. It's a program targeted at energizing health sector, energizing agricultural sector, energizing our rural community education and the transport sector respectively. It's going to be a counterpart fund and the Benue State have secured a deck for a roundtable conversation where investors will be driving. Uh, the counterpart component of that, again, we enjoy the commitment of the Benue State Government to make do. And as soon as that is done, 25 community will be intervened and then power will be made available in the area of health, education, agriculture and transportation. Ladies and gentlemen, from the Ministry of Power, Renewable Energy and Transport, this has been the intervention so far so good under these two years, under the watch of His Excellency Reverend Dr. High sent here on Emelia. I say very big thank you to you.
Can we make the applause louder than that? The man speaks like a future senator. It's our prayer for you that before 2095, you'll become that senator. Ladies and gentlemen, we're moving forward now. And, uh, the program has just been changed. We're going to have the presentation done seriously for all of us. And then during the question and answer sessions from the crowd, uh, whatever concerns any ministry, those concerned will give answers for it. In the meantime, ladies and gentlemen, it is a great honor for me to introduce you a man who is legally enlightened across all the strata of law in the world. Former special advisor in this same state, a former minister of state in this same country and now the Honorable Deputy Governor of Benue State and by the grace of God, with many more things to come in the future. His Excellency Barista Dr. Sam Ode Emeni. Please, let me sit down, thank you kindly.
You know, the technical advisor governor has become a prophet. So if you are lucky, you prophesy in your case like, uh, the Honorable Commissioner for Power. Want to stand on the existing protocol because we have kept our royal fathers here waiting for such a long time. Your Royal Majesty, Ochidoma, we apologize for keeping you and your traditional council members, the representative of the Toteve and other classes of traditional rulers with us in the house here. The major anchor of this program is my colleague, my senior colleague. He was Deputy Governor before me and then went to the Executive Council of the Federation. There, Laboran Mako was one who championed the Association of Ministers of State. And part of the agenda of that group was to complain about the marginalization of ministers of state. In a short while, he became the Minister of Information and that was the end of that association. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, great Benue citizens, I have the honor to represent His Excellency Reverend Father Dr. High sent Yonem Aliyah at this interactive session because as we speak now, he is at the main auditorium of Benue State University, now known as Reverend Father Moses Osho at Dasu University in Makodi here, where a colloquium is being conducted in his honor. And so I will convey to this town hall meeting a few of the achievements of this administration, which of course is going to be two years in office tomorrow. When you allow Laboran Mako to speak, it is difficult for you to have any other thing to say. In the Nigerian political space, he's second only to Professor Jerry Ghana. In the Nigerian political space, he's second only to Professor Jerry Ghana. The governor sent apologies, and it's likely he will join us here before the end of this session. Here are some of the achievements of the administration of His Excellency Reverend Father Heisen Yomemalaya in the last two years. Infrastructure, we have over 26 roads that constitute a network of roads within the Macodi metropolis. And this range from the ones in New G R A to Adeke to Achusa, Wurukum, North Bank and High Level. We have two major underpasses ongoing simultaneously, one at High Level and the other at the Gavro Junction in Boku. We have the ongoing construction of Obalike Itu to Adum East to Jurod, a total of 35 kilometers. This is ongoing. We have the ongoing construction of Baua to Bakotiam Adikbo Kalaba Road with a spa to Medi Mbera Baako in Vanikel Local Government. This is again 34 kilometers. We have the ongoing construction of Akazwa Mwe Mwe Badede Road in Vanikel Local Governments. We have the rehabilitation of the Captain Down Street, which is 4.6 kilometers ongoing in Boku Local Government area. We have the ongoing construction of N K S T Anzwa Road. This is 553 meters in Boku. Among others, we have the construction of the T A D Road, 2.6 kilometers. We have the construction of the Tomota Road in Boku, 4.10 kilometers. We have Maniam Onongo Adikbo Road, 22.5 kilometers. That is in Kwanzae Local Government area of the state. Also ongoing are the construction of the Obagaji to Okuklo. Agabe Road, this road is 43.5 kilometers and covers Agatu and Gueves Local Governments. The value of this contract is about 29.8 billion. We have also the Igumale to Agila Road, which is 31.2 kilometers and valued at 19 billion. We have also the ongoing construction of the Adikbo to Kotiyo Vanikar with a spa to Temke, 33 kilometers. This between Vanikar and Kwanzae Local Government areas of the state. We have the ongoing construction of the Oshongo to Bem, which is 16.5 kilometers covering Oshongo and Vanikar Local Government areas of the state. We have the ongoing construction of Atiku to Akai, which is 32 kilometers in Zone B, Boku Local Government. We have the ongoing construction of Itiwaye Road, which is in Buruku, 20 kilometers. We have the ongoing construction of the Vanikar Konya to Wesi, 33 kilometers, and it cuts across Vanikar and Koshala Local Government area of the state. We also have the ongoing construction of Tsechenge Abua Dagba Road, 23 kilometers in Vanikar Local Government area of the state. We have also the construction of Dagba Adangwechi Road, 28 kilometers. We have the award of over 50 roads across three government areas of the state. That is in the area of road infrastructure. As much as possible, this session is going to be interactive. And that is why we scaled down the participation of honorable commissioners. We want them to be able to answer questions from those who are participating at this event so that we don't bore you with the executive only talking about the event here. In the area of housing, we have the remodeling of the Benue House of Assembly Clinic with state of art amenities, which is for the benefit of our assembly members and other staff of the local government, sorry, the Assembly Service Commission. That complex is also open to public. We have the renovation and the furnishing of the State Secretariat, which was built by the AKU administration. If you go there, the story has changed. The place is wearing a new look. Quite a lot of automation has also been done to make the building not only an edifice, but that which is functional for the performance of government business. We have the renovation of the Government House Complex, which is ongoing. We have the renovation of the Upper AKU Stadium, which has been transformed now into a continental masterpiece that will host international football competitions. We also have the award of contract for the rehabilitation of the Deputy Governor's Lodge, which has just been awarded. And contractors are already processing the payments to continue work, to commence work. We have the remodeling into a modern structure, assembly complex, which is standing right behind us in Government House here. We have the ongoing construction of the earlier ultra modern conference hall at the State's Emergency Management Agency. This edifice is already at 95% completion. The Light Up Macodi Project is one of the key achievements of this administration, and it has converted our state capital into a 24 hour economy. The other day, I was moving around, inspecting projects at night, and I saw a carpenter around the Federal Medical Center who was working under the lights at about 1:00 a.m. in the morning. And so it has also improved the security and the well-being of those who reside within the capital. It is the plan of government that will spread the Light Up Project to all the headquarters of our local governments in the 23 local government areas of the state. In the health sector, we are indeed doing that which has not been done before. Our Federal Medical Center, sorry, our Benue State University Teaching Hospital, today is a reference point for healthcare delivery across the Nigerian nation states today. First and foremost, in a bid to ensure effective study and service delivery, His Excellency was the first in Nigeria to implement the revised Medical Residency Training Fund in 2023 for residents at the revised rate. We also introduced the medical bond scheme for medical students of the School of Health Science, Benue State University by approving 100,000 naira per student. We also have approved the sum of 100,000 naira to be paid to all youth corpus in the medical sector who choose to serve in Benue State here. Indeed, we have also opened and commenced full clinical services at the Mohammed Bouhari Mother and Child Hospital to reduce maternal mortality rate in the state and also to offer free medical services to women and children below the age of five. We have connected the hospital facilities at the Teaching Hospital to the 33 kV A for power supply and to complete the installation of the 300 kV A solar panel for the hospital to guarantee all the electricity supply. We also have a total overhaul and a renovation of the structures at the Benue State University Teaching Hospital, including all the walls and departments and the doctor's quarters. Our grading of some units and departments to international standard, including facilities and equipment have also been completed. Ladies and gentlemen, talking about improved staff welfare, we have, in the short time we are in government, successfully promoted all staff and paid all allowances that were outstanding. We have also successfully employed over 500 new staff in the health sector to augment the workforce to meet up with the increased customer demand for healthcare services within the state. The equipments that we have bought and installed at the Teaching Hospital include, but not limited to, a new dialysis unit in isolation complex with two functional new machines, a newly installed eco-friendly and smokeless incinerator, newly installed eco-friendly and smokeless incinerator number two. Additionally, we have procured and installed the chemilinescent for special tests too. We have purchased the ECU to 110 electro-surgical generator for O and G departments. We have purchased and installed latest UPS to radiology department. We have installation of 27 television sets and decoders for patients who are in-house. We have refurbished manual smoking incinerator number two. At the hospital, the machine has been repaired and is fully functional and has been put to use. We have cut off all leakages and convicts of inefficient money consuming channels. A total overhaul and restructuring of nutrition block into a more spacious office accommodation for the upgrading of school of biomedical engineering and health services is also functioning. We have ensured the accreditation visit of four departments. We have plans that are underway to ensure the effective primary healthcare delivery system in the state through the renovation and upgrade of primary healthcare centers across Benue State. The one Dr. Omeri mentioned in Aquigade is one of them. In the transport sector, I believe that the Honorable Commissioner has done justice to that particular aspect. But I also want to inform us here that we are exploiting and exploring possibilities of going into renewable energy to power our vehicles with electricity and also gas. This is to make for clean energy that will be friendly to the environment. The Benue State University, as you know, has expanded academic programs and of course, the physical space. We have established in the last 11 months a Faculty of Pharmaceutical Sciences, Faculty of Architecture, of E X C Mass Communication Programs, Faculty of Technology and Industrial Studies, Restoration of Scholarship to Students of College of Health Sciences, 100,000 naira bond scheme to balance the learning and further commit the two services of the state under mandatory training. Payment of outstanding salaries areas from April 2023 that became a source of constant agitation by unionists in the sector. Restoration of full salary subvention to the School of Health Sciences to stop the shortfall arising from government allocations for payment of staff salaries for almost a year. The upgrading of ICT facilities in the university for the training of 10,000 youth in the state. We have completed 10,000 so far. We are already procuring another 10,000 youth to be trained in the ICT sector. It will interest you to know that this second tranche of 10,000 is just part of the 50,000 youth training facility that has been approved by the Benue State Executive Council, the Bureau for Education and Quality Assurance. His Excellency Reverend Father Dr. Heisen Yomemalaya has allocated 15% of the 2024-2025 budget to education, even more than 7%, which is what we have at the federal level. We have built and furnished the Bureau for Education Quality Assurance, BECA, to promote a conducive work environment and to regulate and enforce quality in the education sector within Benue State. We have domesticated the 934 system of education in alignment to the Federation and other subnationals. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, in the area of economy, commerce and world Igumale all the way to Agila. The last time that road, the first time that road was constructed was in the AKU administration. It was constructed between Utukpo down to Igumale, and it terminated there. Your Royal Highness Adonene is here, and he knows that. Now, subsequent administrations made efforts to improve on the roads. The Sosama administration also did some work. But the road is still in a deplorable condition. But between Igumale and Agila, we have never had 100 meters of tar road before. We awarded that contract, and it is 19 billion. So in the whole of Zon C, we've awarded contracts worth 75 billion naira so far as we speak. The Otobee Water Works, which was awarded by the Sosama administration, was completed, and the contractor was being owed some money. So he refused to hand over that plant to government for the use of the people. When we came to government, we identified that needs. And so far, we have approved, the Executive Council has approved the payment of 1.5 billion to the contractor. The money has been released by the Ministry of Finance. I'm saying this as a matter of fact. And I know that the contractors in the days ahead are going to complete that plant and hand it over. They are moving to site tomorrow. That's what the Commissioner is saying. Additionally, another 500 and something million was also allocated for partial reticulation of Utukpo Township. We expect that all of this will take place starting from tomorrow. So I want to say that no part of this state will be marginalized. The Utukpo Bond Bricks is within Zone C, and it is going to be constructed. During the last convocation of the Benue State University, now Reverend Father Moses Osho at Dasu University, the governor made a pronouncement, and it is on record. The Commissioner of Education is here. He's also a reverend gentleman. A campus of the Benue State University is going to be established in Benue South and Central District, also known as Zone C. We are going to consult with His Royal Majesty, the Ochidama. He knows that I have spoken to him about it before. I will sit with the traditional rulers, and we are going to decide where we will locate that campus of the BSU in Zone C. As we speak, the Katina La Water Scheme, which was awarded at the same time with the one at Otobi. The Benue State Executive Council had already voted money to pay also for that particular plant. But because of the intervention of the governor, High Padek has already concluded arrangements to take over, maintain and run that plant that is in Katina La Local Governments. On the issue of the reticulation of water in Macodi here, Your Royal Highness Adonene asked that we should continue to do first reticulation of water supply in the township. Your Royal Highness, that is the plan of government. When the plant we have here, the Greater Macodi Water Works, was commissioned, it was constructed by Gilmore Nigerian Limited. We brought in CGC, which did part of the reticulation to some parts of the state. That's why in G R A here and Environs, that reticulation is ongoing. But we are right now in a conversation with Gilmore and the CGC to continue to face the reticulation of water in the township. reticulation of water in the township. And part of the plan is that the company will do the reticulation, we will also engage them to collect water rates so that whatever you install meters in individual houses and industrial businesses and commercial businesses so that as they supply you water, you pay a token of money for the services that are provided. The gentleman on the right here, he said, what are the effects of the killing by bandits and headers on the economic activities in the state? Your question is one of the most important questions so far. The Constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, in its opening schedule, says that the purpose of government is the security and the welfare of the people. And so as a government, we are very much concerned. Earlier on when my senior colleague was talking to us, he told us that the problem of security is not isolated to Benue. Indeed, in the northeast and in most states of the north central, the issue of the killings by headers and other criminal elements and bandits has become a source of concern. But I want us to understand that asymmetric warfare is very difficult to confront. If you are fighting an enemy that you can see, it is easier for you to fight him and degrade him. But the bandits we have here, properly organized as syndicates, they strike and they run away. That is why it is very difficult for us to confront them. But as we speak, the federal government of Nigeria, working together with the Benue State Government under the leadership of Father Alia, are designing a very effective security architecture that will be proactive to prevent the occurrence of these killings. We don't want it to happen before we stand up and begin to condemn it here and there. I think that the plan the government has since is a security plan, which we still leave it under the table, but I want to assure you that we are not resting because when there is insecurity here, business people will not come. And when they don't come here, the economy of the state will go down and that is not the desire of this government. No single life of any citizen in Benue is worth giving any form of ignorance. We are intended, we are intentional about the protection of lives and property in Benue State. And so let this not be lost on anyone. We are not going to allow anyone to politicize the killings that are going on. We are confronting it with all sense of patriotism and we continue to do so because you have voted us into government to protect you and to serve you. So be assured that this government will not rest on her house until the territory of Benue is fully protected. The state, as a government, when we assumed office, we did a manpower audit of the security, Benue State Security Volunteer Guards, which was established by the former administration. And the essence of this was to flush out some criminal elements that had infiltrated that particular structure. Now, we have put in place the Benue Civil Protection Guard, which is under the leadership of a retired general of the Nigerian Air Force, Air Commodore Jack Manwa Retired. The essence of this is to make sure that he will collaborate to security agencies in the state. You know that we do not have the powers to give arms of a certain category to these volunteers. The criminal elements that we are confronting, we are dealing with are people who are coming in with sophisticated weapons, AK-49 and the rest of them. But it is our desire that we empower our communities. The people who are going to recruit into the Civil Protection Guard will be people who live in the communities, who know the terrain very well and who can rise to the occasion, work together with the security agencies by providing them intelligence gathering, intelligence report that will enable them to confront and degrade these criminal elements. So I want you to be assured that all that is necessary to be put in place to do this shall be done. The government recently, as you know, bought and equipped over one hundred Hilux vehicles, which we have distributed to security agencies across the state for the purpose of protecting all Benue citizens. This is our determination and will not be deterred by any factors. So I want to assure you that this is the direction that we are going. But again, let me say that security is a cost. The government will also always say something to us that if we hear something, say something. It is the intelligence we get from the communities that will enable us to plot the strategy to fight the enemies that are confronting us. So let us look at security as a shared responsibility between the government and all of our communities across the state. Thank you very much. So I want to thank you so much. I have attempted to answer some of the questions. Like I said, some of the remarks you have made are not questions, they are recommendations and we have documented them properly and we shall convey this to the Benue State Executive Council and the Benue State Security Council. Luckily, His Royal Majesty the Ochidoma is here, is an active member of the Benue State Security Council, which have bring all these issues to that council and take decisions that will be in the best interest of the people of Benue State. Your Excellency, the former Minister of Information, Federal Republic of Nigeria, my senior colleague, Laboran Makku, the former DG of the National Orientation Agency, Dr. Mike Omiri, and all members of the Benue State Executive Council and Security Council who are here, our traditional rulers, civil society organization and civil-based organizations that are here, we want to thank all of you for finding time to come and participate in this interactive town hall meeting. It is our wish that as we go on, at least on a quarterly basis, we'll be able to provide a platform where we can come together and talk about the future of our state. We have no other state apart from Benue. We must all join hands to develop this state. Before I give my closing remarks, we have our paramount rulers who are here. We must give them the opportunity to talk to us because they are the custodian of the lands. They live with the people and they know the character and the geography of the places that are under their domain. I will therefore give first and foremost the representative of the Totif, the microphone, to give us a word from His Royal Majesty, the Totif, who is the Chairman of the Benue Council of Chiefs, and thereafter, His Royal Majesty, Agaba Idubochidoma will give us his own remarks and then we can draw the cutting on this segment of the activities that are lined up towards the second anniversary of the earlier late administration. Thank you very much and God bless you.
The Executive Governor of Benue State, I want to thank you together with your visitors from the federal government, members of Benue State Executive Council. It was this morning, it was this morning about seven thirty, I received a call from the Totif that I should represent him at this very important gathering. And when I came, after a few minutes, the Ochidoma came and I told him that I am the representative of Totif. I was expecting to see, I had an idea of the agenda for this meeting because before I went to sit with Ochidoma, some of my chiefs were clamoring, they were saying that this must be a meeting where they would talk about security in Benue State. That was their main concern. So we came to sit out, then the meeting started. I had no idea what the meeting was about, but when the two speakers from the federal government spoke, then I knew that this is the agenda, that maybe it's the actual panorama that should be done about what people of Benue State are doing. And that, and they were so emphatic and I want to congratulate them because they have seen what they have told of some of us, maybe we don't go to the, we don't know. So I think if the governor is performing and we are putting it down into our pockets without the world knowing, I think that's not fair enough. So what I've heard from them, they even, some of the projects advanced in the teaching hospital here, some of the things we're mentioning were not only encouraging, they were very, 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 very touching. Because if there's a VIP, if there's a VIP room there in hospital there, maybe I wouldn't disturb the governor to go to Abuja, I would just go there to have my medicine checked. So there are so many, so many, so many issues that they mentioned, they know more about that teaching hospital than we are that we are sitting here. So I want to thank the organizers of this forum. It's good to allow people who know this is a common, see what we are and panorama it. But then, as I've been telling people, see the people sitting there with bits, they are traditional rulers. Most of them, they hardly speak, but when they want to speak, they don't speak from both sides of their cheeks. They tell you exactly what they have seen. And so I'm just going to do that now. When we started this, in the morning, before I spoke to the Totif, I had to send a message of condolence to my elder brother, Chief Adonene, look at him sitting there. His house, he's a fiscal chief and his wife was the first lady. The whole place had been vandalized and people got and killed by the, they were buried. This was actual mass burial. Before that, in my domain here, from here to Yedu Water, I might be people, if you were lucky, those people who are killing Yedu Water, if they met you, maybe the governor could have sent soldiers to go and rescue you. And I want to tell you that there are some area here in Benue State, you cannot reach by road. Nakka is a town, it's a headquarters of a local government. You dare not go to Nakka now. These people are on the road in the night, in the bush, they will finish you up. So the issue of security, Benue State, the Idoma people has become an issue. It has reached a stage where the T people and Idoma people, the T nation made a declaration, they made a declaration that they are begging their brothers, the Fulanis, the Fulanis who lived with us before, who we have intermarried, who have been together in peace, but the type of Fulanis that have come now, we believe they are not Nigerians. And the fact that the Fulanis who are here with us have not told us that these people are criminals, come and butcher our wife, so much we can be, this is farming season. A T man, Idoma man lives by farming, now they cannot touch their farms, they can't , if we're serious. So we said, look, we are pleading with our brothers, the Fulanis. We, what, there should not be people again because we cannot take this. So, let the federal government know this. And what, the Benue State Government doesn't, what we want to say, Fulanis leave us, it's none of their business, it's federal government's business. So the federal government should know that we have given the Fulanis in Benue State
And also talk to ourselves, the Benue State. I was not even thinking that we are coming here to think about what the government have done because I know that is what is going to be discussed tomorrow, twenty-ninth May two thousand and twenty-five. And we have prepared a message to present today also to tell the people what the government have done. We appreciate everything he has done and I use his name to capture what he has done in Benue State. When you were talking, I begin to write down certain thing to bring out, the Haasent, H, health systems threatening, I know it is there, youth empowerment, agricultural revolution, development, infrastructure advances, natural resources management, transparency and good governance, movement and the alias, asset to education, literacy and skill development.
Every major news story is with many perspectives and layered with different levels of impact.
Honey, what time did this happen? We will be right there.
At TVC News, we follow the big and major news, gathering the facts, witnessing the outcome.
I am here live at the aftermath of the approval of the new national minimum wage.
We are TV station of the year, not just for breaking news, but for being first, fair and accurate. TVC News, first with breaking news.
There is always more to a story than the scrimmated line. The part of a story that is not told casts a shadow. It's like the part of an object that is not reached by light. On TVC News, I'm able to explore the many angles throughout a story, talking to stakeholders, asking the difficult questions and digging for facts. I believe the viewers are able to make a better decision if they are well informed. I believe the viewers are able to make a better decision if they're well informed and understand not just the part, but the complete story. TVC News, first with breaking news.
That all of us that are from Benue, this is our state, we have no other state in this state. I find out now, I'm going to make is to report facts as they are, to remove ourselves from partisanship and to report exactly what we see, what we hear with accountability. If we focus on developing, governance is a joint responsibility between the people and their government. And I believe His Excellency in his concluded remarks is going to respond to some of the other issues that arose. And I believe everything we have done here today is exactly what we intend to do. May the Lord God Almighty give Governor Alia and his team the courage, the good health, the vision to continue to work on this project and lift Benue to the next level. Thank you for this opportunity given to us and the Lord bless you all. Thank you indeed, your highnesses.
The idea, first of all, I'd like to appreciate Laboran Makou who has just made his closing remark. I think the idea of the town hall meeting is all about government being responsible and accountable to the people. And of course, I would believe that from the responses and from the answers that the deputy governor has responded to some of these questions. We, there is optimism that the people have more confidence that better days lie ahead of them. Honorable Commissioner for Information and Material giving the closing remarks.
Reverend Father High Saint Eumamalia PSD, heavily represented by the Deputy Governor of Benue State, Honorable Barrister Sam Ode MNI. Our Royal Majesty is here present. All our chiefs, executive consular, I stand on existing protocols. Today is a great day in the life of Benue State. Yeah, because His Excellency, the Executive Governor permitted a media group that is not from Benue State to come and assess his performances in the state. I say it is a great day because sometimes when you are listening to somebody that is very close to you, you don't actually understand. I think that is a wisdom His Excellency invited Timbuktu Media Group headed by the former Minister of Information, Laboran Makou, to come assess his performances within two years in office. They have come, they have actually told us what that we appreciate you. I want to say indeed a lucky state to have gotten a Reverend Father as a replica of what Father Dasu
voted as the best TV station of the year. TVC News breaks into the core of every event as they happen. Following all nationwide big and impactful stories, we tell the news from every perspective, covering every human angle. I am Veronica, bringing you the news you would want to watch.
We share, remodel our economy to build our growth and develop the GDP, achieve the GDP most better than we have today.
By May twenty nine, it would be exactly two years President Bola Tinubu was sworn in as the sixteenth president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria with a mandate of renewed hope. It is time to be in spotlight on the scorecard on this slogan in health, interior ministry, aviation, finance, foreign affairs, trading, investment and some more. Join us on Beyond the Headlines with Nifemi Oguntue as we engage federal ministers and executive governors across the country to share the challenges and successes. Tune in to TVC News at six PM to seven PM from the nineteenth of May to the thirtieth of May, twenty twenty five.
TVC News, first with breaking news.
I'm Nifemi Oguntue, news anchor with TVC News. My day is usually busy and it's difficult keeping up with breaking news stories, trending stories, business news, stock exchange and worldview. But with TVC News on WhatsApp, I'm able to catch up with all the breaking news, real time updates and trending stories on the go right on my phone, no matter where I am, it's quick, easy and always on. And here you can join us by scanning the QR code or using the link on our X and Instagram. Why wait? Come to the side of news that keeps you ahead. TVC News, first with breaking news.
Good morning Marina Station and all the passengers.
Efficient, it's comfortable.
These developments will go a long way in reducing congestion and emission.
The trains are a long-term solution to Lagos' traffic challenges.
This is where we take the final, you know, decisions on policies, programs of government. I will have to ensure that, you know, the narration of Lagos as a PLC is taken very, very seriously.
This is a major pedestrian bridge linking Oyigbo here to Apapa Road over there.
With this overpass, we are providing what we call a permanent solution.
This place is one of the most dangerous areas at the value security environment.
This can go into the means and every crumbs of your neighborhood.
Our goal is to remain as Africa's model megacity, to move our GDP from the five, six position to the third position and we believe is achievable with all the commitments we have.
Explore the city of Lagos, where dreams are made and possibilities are endless.
I'm Adedwaja Salama Dinii, I live in Lagos, inside Lagos.
Meet Binga Oreshugn, a fearless voice and an advocate for the truth. He's bringing fresh energy and bold insights to journalists hang out.
Get ready for deeper analysis and dynamic perspectives. Join me and Baba Jide Kollade Uti Toji with other veteran journalists on Journalist Hangout. Weekdays from five PM and on Sundays, one thirty PM.
From the valleys through the hills to the riverbanks of Kogi State, we bring you update on the developmental and economic activities of the Kogi State government under the leadership of Governor Ahmed Usmano Dodo on Confluent States Today. From road construction to infrastructure, health and human development, we take you on a journey around the twenty-one local government areas of Kogi State on Confluent States Today. Kogi State is moving forward, our people are enjoying the true dividends of democracy. Confluent States Today, showing on TVC News at this time.
Need to learn to speak to situation, but that is the way of dominion. You speak to your documents, you speak to your body, you call your organ well. Speak over your business, speak over opportunities that come your way. In accepting your height, accepting your color, you don't like your wife and then you want to prosper. Five loaves of bread will not multiply with murmuring and yelling. Abraham and Lot, that was the game. Lot misbehaved, Abraham carried three eighteen soldiers to rescue him. At the end of the day, it was Lot that destroyed himself, overcome evil with good.
Winning in life brings you undiluted and practical teachings on how to achieve success and gain wisdom in every aspect of life.
Let there be healing where it's needed, let there be wisdom to make better decisions where it's needed. Let there be supplies or finances where it's needed, in the name of Jesus Christ.
Showing on TVC News, GSTV Channel four one eight, every Sunday at nine.
Nigeria's Niger Delta region, where the black gold continues to flow and fuel Africa's largest economy, where the line between wealth and poverty has never been thinner. Oil, gas, politics, development and community issues, all are highly valuable commodities in the Niger Delta. How do they combine and how can they work together to spawn a new era in the Niger Delta?
Join award-winning ACE broadcaster Mamode Felix Akuga on TVC News. Every Wednesday at nine thirty PM and Saturdays at three thirty PM. As he probes deep to analyze issues in the region from angles never before explored. Inside the Niger Delta with Mamode Akuga, the authentic voice of Nigeria's oil-rich region.
For God so loved the world, and He gave His only because His son, that whosoever believes in it should not perish, but have everlasting life. In program to eight verse thirteen, the Bible says, he that coveteth the sin shall not prosper. For whosoever confesses them and forsakes them shall have mercy. Unbelievable sin, unforgiveness in sin, selfishness in sin, insincerity, disobedience, blasphemy, anger, envy. Speaking evil of other people, but biting, murmuring, cursing people, swearing with heaven at eight. All these are terrible sin. You must confess them, renounce them and promise God no more.
Every second, every minute, every hour and every day, time doesn't just tick away. It accounts down to political decisions that shape our world.
This country must move ahead.
Imagine the impacts these decisions have on our lives. Some consequential authors may leave us intrigued or baffled.
You will have no better friend and partner than a God.
Step in and feel the frenzy like never before. Join me every weekday for an hour of fact-finding interviews where questions cut to the core. How would you say your administration has failed in these sectors? And we will dig in to get to the heart of issues from local politics to global insight. Join me as I unearth the power place, jaw-dropping revelations and the unfiltered truth. This isn't just politics, it's unraveling the stories that matter. Raise yourself for politics tonight, every weekday at eight PM, where every decision echoes along the corridors of our lives. Politics Tonight, only on TVC News.
Meet Binga Oreshugn, a fearless voice and an advocate for the truth. He's bringing fresh energy and bold insights to journalists hang out.
Get ready for deeper analysis and dynamic perspectives. Join me and Baba Jide Kollade Uti Toji with other veteran journalists on Journalist Hangout. Weekdays from five PM and on Sundays, one thirty PM.
The Shared Prosperity Weekly TV Series on TVC News. It is through this telecast the viewers get to know what is happening in the prosperity government of His Excellency Senator Hope Uzodima, the Executive Governor of Imo State. Through this program, all questions agitate in the minds of citizens and residents of Imo State are answered in details with documentary evidence. Don't miss it. Keep a date with us every Sunday on TVC News by nine PM.
Akiwande Oluwale Shoyinka was born on thirteenth July nineteen thirty-four in Abekuta, Nigeria to parents Samuel and Grace Shoyinka. His education began with the Christian lessons of his parents as well as the more traditional Yoruba spiritual customs taught to him by his grandfather. He had his preparation university studies at Government College Ibadan in nineteen fifty-four, subsequently University College Ibadan. And he continued at the University of Leeds, earned a bachelor's degree in English literature. Shoyinka's master's degree focused on projects combining his Yoruba culture with traditional British theatre traditions. He later returned to school in Nigeria to study African theatre, during which time he continued to produce poems and plays, one of which appeared on Nigerian television. Shortly after, he became the chief of the Cathedral of Drama at the University of Ibadan. Nigeria had only recently gained independence from Britain and political corruption was at a high. Shoyinka's plays and poems became increasingly political and he began giving speeches protesting government corruption. He was accused of conspiring with the Biafa rebels. He was therefore arrested and imprisoned in nineteen sixty-seven for almost two years during the civil war, but managed to earn his time to write numerous poems. He was finally released in nineteen sixty-nine after a brief period in France. He returned to his position at the university where he founded the magazine Black Of Years. He left his position and Nigeria in nineteen seventy-one, wary of the political climate of the country. During this time, he published books of poetry and essays. His plays were collected and published and newer plays were staged. In nineteen eighty-six, he was the first African to win the Nobel Prize in Literature for a Wide Cultural Perspective and with poetic overtones fashioning the drama of existence. He dedicated his acceptance speech to Nelson Mandela and used a platform to criticize apartheid. Later that same year, Shoyinka was awarded the Ajib Prize and in nineteen eighty-eight published his book Mandela's Earth and all the poems as well as art, dialogue and outrage, essays on literature and culture. He also accepted a position at a Cornell University. Throughout his life, he has served as a spokesman against apartheid and government corruption. He has won numerous other awards for his work, including the Annis Field Wolf Book Award, the Academy of Achievement Golden Plate Award and the Ajib Prize for Literature. And he has scored at many prestigious universities, including Emory University, Harvard and Obafemi Awolowo University. In his lifetime, Shoyinka has published two novels, three collections of short stories, made three movies, translated two novels, five memoirs, seven poetry collections, thirteen essay collections and produced nearly thirty plays. He holds honorary doctorates from numerous universities and has been invited to teach in schools around the world. He continues to write prolifically in spite of a bout with prostate cancer in twenty fourteen. Olwale Shoyinka, the Nigerian playwright and political activist, has positioned himself as a voice to the voiceless through his piece of art. He has distinguished himself as the African icon that continuously makes a mark in African literature and the world at large.
Group Media Group headed by the former Minister of Information, Laboran Makou, to come assess his performances within two years in office. They have come, they have seen and they have actually told us what the present administration has done. So we appreciate you. I want to say categorically that Benue State is indeed a lucky state to have gotten a Reverend Father for the second time to rule this state. And what we are seeing now is almost a replica of what Father Dasu did. And I must also say that within two years in office, our governor has done more than other governors did in eight other governors did in eight years. Because I am in the system and I know what I have been telling people. And so it is an opportunity for all of us here to listen to the visitors who have come and then add it up to what we have been telling you, so that you will be in a better position to explain the position of this government. And so I want to thank you very seriously for honoring this occasion. As you move here to go to your various destinations, may God do take you safely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've had the privilege of working with my commissioner. He is one of the most gentlemen I've ever met in my life, a good leader and a good director. A round of applause to him one more time. At some point in the life of a people, they must decide where they want to go, whether they want development or they want to keep sharing money under the table. But as for Benue, from what we have seen here, we have decided to go out of the wools of underdevelopment to the next level. And of course, His Excellency, by the message of God, is the one in the driver's seat, and we're all excited. At this point in time, may I welcome to the microphone one more time His Excellency, the Deputy Governor of Benue State for his closing remarks before we take the national I didn't hear you clap for him. One more time, please. Once again, I convey to you the best regards of His Excellency, Reverend Father Dr. Haes and D M Alia, the Governor of Benue State, on the occasion of this interactive session, which is being conducted by an independent group of media people who have gone around Benue State to do an assessment, of course, very independent assessment, of what this administration has been able to achieve in the last two years since its assumption of office. Our royal fathers, our paramount rulers have spoken, and they have spoken very, very loudly. Your Royal Majestor Chidabah, I want to assure you that you have spoken very loudly and we have heard you. The Federal Government of Nigeria, under the leadership of His Excellency Bola Ahmed Tinibu, G C F R Commander in Chief of the Armed Forces of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, is determined to ensure that the security of this nation is guaranteed. It is to that extent that just recently, he sent the National Security Advisor, Malam Nuhuri Badu, who came to Benue here and spent some time with the governor and the security team in this state, and we had very deep conversations around the issues of security. All we ask for is patience. Give us some time, and we assure you that we are not asking for too much time. We are working diligently and we are taking steps to ensure that what has been happening recently in Benue will be put to a stop. The vocation of the mass majority of Benue people is farming. If you cannot go to your farm and be sure that you can freely cultivate your farms and get proceeds from your harvests, then it means that your occupation as a people is lost. This government will never, and I repeat, will never accept that kind of situation. We are going to discuss, we are going to put our communities together, we are going to work with a traditional institution to put in place the necessary framework to police our communities in a manner that will prevent strangers from coming into our land to defile the peace of our people. This is a solemn pledge that we make as a government, and I know the Governor of Benue State is determined that the Benue political space will be protected. We shall continue to hold this kind of interactive session, at least on a quarterly basis, so that we can aggregate the views of the citizens of our state to help us to plan and to respond to the challenges of governance. We do not know all, we are willing to learn, because life in itself is a learning curve. Take it from us that we are your servants, and we shall continue to listen to your voices, because it is only when you are happy that we shall know that there is a government in place and that the government is effective. May God bless the Federal Republic of Nigeria, God bless Benue State, God bless the people of Benue State. Thank you very much. On that note, let's rise as we take the national anthem, please. Thank you very much, Your Excellency.
Welcome back from the live telecast. We'll now continue with our regular programs. Stay tuned.
Hadiya Imam Sulaiman Ibrahim gives us an inside look at the ministry's midterm report card and national priorities. Welcome to Beyond the Headlines.
This celebration would not only be a moment of rejoicing, but also a moment of reflection and introspection.
Exactly fifty years ago today, in this very city of Lagos, fifteen West African leaders signed what would become the Lagos Treaty, giving birth to ECOWAS. Their goal is a unified region where people, goods and opportunities could move freely. The regional bloc today stands at a crossroads, celebrating a legacy of regional integration while grappling with security breakdowns, democratic setbacks, as well as the dramatic exit of Mali, Burkina Faso and Naj. To help us navigate this complex moment is Professor David Awurawo, Professor of International Relations and Head of the Department of History and Strategic Studies at the University of Lagos. Thank you for joining us on the program this evening.
Thank you for having me.
At the beginning, May twenty-eighth nineteen seventy-five, what would you say were the political and economic conditions that made the Lagos Treaty both possible and necessary at the time? Even though if the information about you on internet of the is correct, I understand you were just about six years old at the time, Prof.
Yes, I was very young when the ECOWAS was formed, but I have come to learn a lot about ECOWAS over time. I have been discussing with General Gouon a few years ago about ECOWAS, and he was very happy to know that ECOWAS is still functioning well and is still making efforts to fulfill the objectives for which the regional body was established in nineteen seventy-five. But the context for the establishment was that in the nineteen seventies, regional integration had become very popular. Literally, every region of the world was making efforts to establish some form of economic cooperation and integration, and West Africa was not going to be left behind. Fortunately, Gouon faced the matter and discussed with other, you know, heads of state and government across West Africa. He had, you know, a close ally, former President Nasimbe Yadema of Togo, and they worked together and negotiated with other, you know, states across the subregion, Kwaibwa, Senegal and the rest. And then the result was the founding of ECOWAS, with the treaty signed on the twenty-eighth of May nineteen seventy-five. Of course, the objectives are very clear. Article three of the treaty states the objectives, economic cooperation, economic development, economic integration towards the improvement of the quality of lives and peoples of West Africa. You know, very straightforward, and those are the objectives of ECOWAS. It has tried to ensure that these objectives are met over the years, but of course, we know that the road is still very far because the achievements have been very modest in this regard.
Yeah, talking about where we are and where we're supposed to be, what's your assessment of the vision beyond ECOWAS as emerging by the leaders you just mentioned about? You just talked about President Ayadema, and then General Yakub Gouon, who today is the only surviving founding leader. Would you say that vision has been fully realized, halfway realized or lost altogether?
I would say halfway realized. It's not lost altogether. West Africa has carried out economic integration over the years, with some success here and there, not anywhere near the level that...
Prof, we lost you for a minute. Can you hear me now? Professor David Awurawo is our guest today as we continue to explore precisely what has happened to the sub-region bloc called ECOWAS. There are conversations as to what are the key achievements of ECOWAS in the last fifty years, especially in the area of trade, peacekeeping or diplomacy. If you look back, you wonder how stakeholders assess ECOWAS' role in peacekeeping interventions in countries like Liberia, Syria Leone and the Gambia compared to what we experienced in today with the Sahel crisis. Professor Awurawo, we lost you for a minute. I'd like you to just highlight for us what you consider the top achievements of the sub-region bloc in the past fifty years, especially in areas of peacekeeping or diplomacy, because quite a number of references have been made to the peacekeeping interventions in Liberia, in Syria Leone. When you compare that with the crisis currently rocking the Sahel, what has happened over the years?
Yeah, thank you. I was saying that the basis for the establishment of ECOWAS, which was to promote integration and development in the subregion, you know, very clear, and it was in line with the experiences of West Africa in the sixties and seventies. You know, after independence in the sixties, the expectations were that West Africa would develop very rapidly, of course, Africa as large as well would develop very rapidly, and the development would of course translate to a high level of life for West Africans. But that optimism did not materialize. By the end of the nineteen sixties, Africa as well, and West Africa also in particular, was actually poorer. I mean, the level of violence was lower than what it was in nineteen sixty. And so economic integration was seen as one of the avenues to, you know, promote rapid development across the subregion. And so it was one of the reasons why ECOWAS was established in nineteen seventy-five. But so much has happened, you know, since that time. You just spoke about Liberia and Syria Leone. Liberia and Syria Leone were in crisis in the late nineteen eighties and early nineteen nineties. West African leaders, you know, discovered that if they allowed these, the states to fail, because Liberia and Syria Leone were leading to a phase states, it would negatively impact on development, you know, in the subregion. And so they took measures to contain the violence in the two countries, first in Liberia from nineteen eighty-nine, when ECOMOB was formed, and then of course later in Syria Leone, of course, stretching later to Guinea Bissau. These efforts were made to ensure that stability existed in the subregion, which would promote economic development. The debates went on as to whether what ECOWAS did was illegal or not, because the treaty on nineteen seventy-five did not provide for military intervention, which was why we had a revised treaty in nineteen ninety-three, which came to address some of these issues of, you know, military intervention and security in the subregion. Beyond Liberia, Syria Leone, Guinea Bissau and a few other places where we have had conflict in West Africa, of course, we have had terrorism, jihadism and insurgency across West Africa as well. Mali, in fact, in the whole of the Sahel, we have had, you know, this conflict. West African countries came together to, you know, try to, you know, combat this problem with some success. But now, the exit of some of these countries from ECOWAS, Mali, Niger, Burkina Faso, I would say has been detrimental to regional efforts to combat violence, especially in the northern part of West Africa.
What we've seen in the past decade is that nearly half of ECOWAS member states have experienced coups or attempted coup, and you're wondering, is that a failure on the part of ECOWAS protocol on democracy and good governance, or it's just a broader regional crisis of legitimacy that has come to stay?
Well, there's a lot that West African leaders can do to get ECOWAS in the direction that it should be. One of those things is to pay more attention to tackling violence in the subregion. Violence has been a major problem, it has been a major issue which has been detrimental to the development of the subregion. More efforts need to be, attention needs to be paid to combating violence in the subregion. Without that, economic development cannot take place in a manner in which West African states will want. Then, second, West African leaders need to pay attention to diversification of the economies of different countries in the subregion. If the economies are not diversified, it becomes impossible for West African countries to...
Yes, we lost connection with Dr. Awurawo for a minute. He was just talking about what needs to be done differently with what we've seen in the past decade, with nearly half of the West African, the ECOWAS states members having some threats of coup or even outright coup, which was responsible for the exit of the three countries we talked about earlier. There are also... Prof?
Yes?
We lost you again, but I can hear you now.
Yes, I think I'm back now.
All right, let's go ahead. All right, let's go ahead.
Yes, coups in West Africa are detrimental to economic integration as, you know, instability, violence in the subregion. Because coups, of course, the provisions in ECOWAS, you know, emphasize democratic governance. Democratic governance, governments with the popular participation and with the consent of the people. Military governments are not with the consent of the people. That is why when each time there is a coup, you see ECOWAS will come out and condemn it, impose sanctions and even sometimes threaten military intervention to restore whoever was overthrown. So these coups in Burkina Faso, in Mali and Niger have been, you know, detrimental. Of course, we saw how ECOWAS imposed sanctions on Mali. So, so hard that Mali came to start begging the rest of ECOWAS states and even requesting that, okay, they would start a process of democratization more rapidly than they had initially proposed. But Niger, it became more, you know, rebellious, so to speak, and, you know, more forceful about pulling out of ECOWAS if ECOWAS, the other member countries don't accept the legitimacy of, you know, the government there. And so, of course, we've seen what happened in January this year. Mali, Niger, Burkina Faso pulled out, bringing the number to 12. They were 15 before. Morigina left in 2000. Of course, returned a few years ago, in 2017, not just a full member, but an active member. So from 15 down to 15, from 15 down to 12. Now, ECOWAS leaders, there are things they can do to at least help to reduce these coups. A major issue in these coups has been civilian government not governing well. So good governors will have to reduce coups, that's one. Second, some West African leaders have been known to change constitution from two terms to three terms, four terms. I mean, it's a major issue within the subregion. ECOWAS leaders need to develop the courage to tell themselves the truth that they should stay within term limits, two terms, spend your two terms, govern well and then hand over to another government. If this happens, coups will be reduced to the barest minimum within the subregion. And by essential, it will promote and enhance the ability of ECOWAS to achieve integration and promote development within the subregion. So these are things that ECOWAS leaders need to do in the immediate. And of course, there should also be long-term plans for economic diversification, which will also, of course, promote and enhance intra, you know, West African trade. Right now, West African trade, the countries of West African trade among themselves is less than 15%, which is very low compared with the EU, that is about 70%. So there's a whole long way to go, you know, for ECOWAS to actually achieve the objectives that are clearly stated in Article three of the ECOWAS treaty.
I've heard stakeholders also say that perhaps the energy with which ECOWAS disapproves of military intervention, they should also adopt that in calling it the leadership in the region accountable, especially when you hear of reports of corruption and, you know, some instinct to just want to outstay their welcome as elected leaders.
You cannot be more correct. If we have good governance across West Africa and if West African leaders are genuinely democratic, they stay and stick to the rule of law and if the governance across the subregion impacts on the life of the people positively and development, which is stated on that Article three of the ECOWAS treaty, is promoted and enhanced, it will be difficult for coups to take place. And so that is why we will continue to emphasize this. And fortunately for, you know, ECOWAS leaders, unlike the immediate post-1960 period, when the general notion was that there should be no intervention in the internal affairs of other states, from the early 2000s, all of these things have been, you know, revised. So that states within subregion, states within Africa can ask questions regarding what is happening in other states collectively. And that is why we have the peer review mechanism for the EU. And so this should make it a lot easier for West African leaders, if they have sincerity or purpose, if they have commitments, to be able to ask questions regarding good governance. And when some leaders want to change constitution to have a third term illegally or a fourth term, as we have now currently in Cote d'Ivoire, where the President Alastair Watara is trying to change constitution to have a fourth term, after he's to have a third term, ECOWAS should be able to pick up, you know, issues like this so that such things do not happen. These are things that create the environment for coups to take place, after which ECOWAS becomes reactive.
Absolutely.
ECOWAS leaders need to pay attention to...
Absolutely, Prof.
If ECOWAS were really effective in fulfilling these objectives.
Because the new dimension we're seeing now is the situation where the military leaders are even getting a lot of support on the ground, which makes it difficult for the subregion, you know, organization to act. But let us take a quick look at what we understand as the reenactment of the Lagos Treaty. Because this week's ceremonies include a symbolic reenactment of the Lagos Treaty. Beyond its symbolism, do you see a genuine push to reform or recommit to the treaty's original goals?
There is nothing on ground to indicate or establish that what is taking place in Lagos today, or what has been taking place since yesterday, will go beyond symbolism. There is no concrete thing on the ground to indicate that ECOWAS leaders want to move towards a different direction from, you know, what they have done in the past decade. There needs to be something more concrete that will say, okay, we want to move towards a different direction and this is how we want to achieve it. It's only when one sees things like that, you know, that one can say, yes, ECOWAS is going to be reinvented, so to speak, in the aftermath of this symbolism of the reenactment of the treaty, the Lagos Treaty of 1975. Something concrete, you know, needs to be on ground, but we can't see that yet. But to just comment on the, across West Africa, where there are coups and people jubilate. People jubilate because their needs were not met under civilian government. It is not enough to just say we have democratic governors, we have civilian government, you know, it is not enough. I keep referring to that Article three of the ECOWAS treaty. It says that the integration is safe, economic cooperation, you know, it's not an end in itself. It's towards, you know, ensuring that the subregion, you know, experiences development to start with and also improve the quality of life of the people. That is what has not taken place, why coups are popular. So beyond the symbolism of reenacting the ECOWAS Treaty of 1975, ECOWAS leaders need to use this opportunity to reinvent the organization. Because what needs to be done is clear. They need to speak, you know, more forcefully to one another about illegal terms. They need to speak to one another about reducing corruption. They need to speak to one another about meeting the needs of the people. These are the things that will make ECOWAS effective in the years ahead.
From the original treaty, Prof, pillars like visa, free movement, coordinated trade policy and industrial harmonization were central. Which of these needs the most urgent revival and why?
Well, the visa issue is, I think that one is moving smoothly. This is so these West African countries do not require visas. At least you are free to move with your passport to any of these countries to stay for at least 90 days. I think that that one is moving, is going quite, quite well. But movement from one country to the other, there are too many buttonheads, too many checkpoints, too many security posts. That needs to be looked into so that the movement of persons we talked about will not just be rhetoric, will not just be, you know, just speaking with word of mouth. One has to see it concretely. I attended an ECOWAS gathering in Lagos here a few years ago and some of the, you know, some of the participants that came from Cote d'Ivoire, from Senegal, they complained very bitterly about how much it suffered along the road because too many checkpoints, too many security posts are now. This needs to be looked into. But industrialization, I think, is the most important of all of these things, of all of this. That is how West African states will come together to be able to promote industrialization, to be able to have sectoral specialization. What does this country enjoy advantage in? Let our country specialize in it. And let another country specialize on some other thing. And by the time all of these things are pulled together, the subregion will be able to enjoy, you know, economic development and of course, industrialization. I think that is the most important. And we can take a cue from the South African Development Community, SADC. It was established in 1992, but it has made far more rapid progress than ECOWAS because it has focused on industrialization, it has focused on sectoral specialization by different countries. And that has enabled them to be able to, you know, trade and enjoy economic integration far more than ECOWAS has. These are things that will need to be done. So I think that is by far the most important industrialization to be achieved through sectoral specialization of different countries with purposeful, you know, purposeful commitment by the ECOWAS leaders. When these things are done, ECOWAS will begin to get very close to, you know, those expectations that were held when it was established in 1975.
Visa-free movement, no doubt. But Prof, I recently took a road trip from Lagos to Accra. And, you know, the corruption at the borders is at another level entirely. Even with your passport and yellow card, you are made to pay at every junction. You literally have to beg and begain. And that's for holiday visits. So I'm imagining what happens if it's someone who's going through with his goods and services, the impact that would have and how it's perforating the whole idea of the AFCTA worldview. But quickly, let's touch on the issue you mentioned earlier about the exit of Mali, Burkina Faso and Niger. We talked about what this meant for ECOWAS's internal cohesion and its ability to manage tensions among member states. But these countries, as we speak, have also imposed tariffs on ECOWAS goods and realigned security partnerships toward Russia. What are the broader implications for regional trade and collective security?
Were very negative, the impact is very negative. Because these countries are also in between other West African countries. So you have to travel through them to get to other West African countries. So the exit of these countries is actually a huge negative for the subregion. But the approach of ECOWAS, to be fair, has been very mature. I mean, I don't see what more ECOWAS will have done. ECOWAS tried to persuade them to come back. The threat of military invasion of Niger that ECOWAS leaders presented was withdrawn and assessed their means to bring these countries back. In fact, at some point when these countries were supposed to exit, ECOWAS still left the doors open for them to come back. And they would still, you know, allow these countries to enjoy all the benefits that they would have enjoyed if they were still members of ECOWAS. ECOWAS members did not react aggressively to the withdrawal of these countries. And I think that is the best way to, you know, to approach this issue. So actually, the exit is totally the responsibility of these countries and not anything that ECOWAS member countries did or did not do. That would be a justification for them to withdraw. Now, they are very close to Russia. That's a mistake. These countries did not come, you know, to just begrudge us. These countries always look for something. There are other countries in Africa where Russia has been, Russia's presidents have been, you know, very, very extensive, Central African Republic, South Sudan. You know, all of these countries, go and check out the history. Russia is exploiting the minerals in these countries heavily into billions of dollars. So these countries, Niger, Burkina Faso and Mali, that are not close to Russia. They have just thrown away a mistress and are going to embrace the master. They will all regret it, but unfortunately, it's the citizens of these countries that will be at the brunt at the end of the day.
Quickly, Prof.
These are not always...
Yes. If you can, in a minute, I'm wondering what you think of the kind of reforms that are most urgent to restore trust among West African citizens who now see ECOWAS as a club of head of states, really, rather than a people-focused organization?
Please, please. Yes, the ECOWAS leaders need to put in place policies that would enable citizens of ECOWAS to have a feel that they belong to ECOWAS, so to speak. What regionalism is to a region is what nationalism is to a nation. And initially, a caller who writes about regional integration, such as David Mitroni, did not present regional cooperation as, you know, something that would be limited to presidents and heads of government and heads of state. It was supposed to be something that would embrace everybody. And this is what ECOWAS leaders need to do, to bring everybody on board, have programs that will make ECOWAS citizens to have a feel that they belong to a community, you know, of a region.
Indeed.
What regionalism is to a region.
Good place to leave it. Professor David Awurawo is Professor of International Relations, Head of the Department of History and Strategic Studies at the University of Lagos. Thank you so much for joining us. Hopefully, we'll find time to continue this conversation subsequently.
Thank you for having me.
This celebration would not only be a moment of rejoicing, but also a moment of reflection and introspection.
Doubt and fear doesn't occur at the canvas, it shows in the canvas. It shows the conation of raw, ethereal materials slapped, stroked and molded at a pace provided by the doubt and fear. Every move weighed in the struggle of one to the other, merging the past to the present. Brushstrokes of colors seen but not known. For when the whaling stops, the pieces settle down in abject beauty erected for a century of a century. Speaking, advocating, protesting as the arch are meant to be.
Every major news story is with many perspectives and layered with different levels of impact.
Hello. What time did this happen? We will be right there.
Now we delve into the heart of Nigeria's commitment to its women and children. Joining us is Hajiya Imam Soleiman Ibrahim, the Minister of Women Affairs, who's been at the forefront of initiatives aimed at empowering women, protecting children and strengthening families across the nation. From launching the Nigeria for Women project to advocating for a bullying-free generation, the ministry has been active. But with challenges like gender-based violence, maternal health crises and the need for greater women's representation in politics, the journey is far from over. Honorable Minister of Women Affairs, Hajiya Imam Soleiman Ibrahim, welcome to Beyond the Headlines.
Thank you for having me.
Reflecting on your tenure since last year, what would you highlight as the ministry's most significant achievements to date?
First of all, I would like to, you know, commend, applaud, appreciate His Excellency President Bola Medtunabu for the prioritization and political we demonstrated around women's issues, children, family and the vulnerable. I would say that our main achievement is the strategic alignment of the ministry. You know, in the past, the ministry has totally focused on... You know, in the past, the ministry has totally focused on just grassroots women, not just women in general. But if you look at our recent activities, you know, we're trying to activate every component of the mandate of this ministry in line with the Maputo protocols and other guidelines and frameworks that support the establishment of this ministry thirty years ago. We've fully activated the family cohesion programs. That is where everything starts from. So as a government, we put family at the center of our national development. We're running out a lot of programs that supports the family unit and strengthens that component of the society. We're also focusing on child protection issues and child development. You know, we do have the National Child Policy of two thousand and eight, which is long overdue for a review. We do also have the Child Rights Act of two thousand and three. Congratulations to Nigeria and to the States because it's been domesticated across all the thirty-six states and FCT. And that is, you know, worthy of applause, but it's not just about implementation. We need to domesticate this act. We need to also allocate resources towards implementation. So the needle is moving and we're taking the steps in the right direction. And I must say that also in the areas of collaboration and, you know, working as a block, that also is paramount because the government can't do it alone. When you speak about the people that we serve, it's a lot of numbers, about two hundred million of our population. And hence the need for whole of society, whole of system, whole of government approach.
And you're overseeing what they call the most vulnerable of the population. Let's talk about the Nigeria for Women project. It aims to reach about four point five billion women nationwide. Give us an update on its progress and impact so far.
Okay, so there was a piloting phase with six states, one state in each geopolitical zone, and it was a success. So hence, that informed the upscale of this project, that is targeted to reach four point five million people in Nigeria. The upscale is alive and it's running. We have so many states already subscribing and other states, you know, pushing to meet up with all the requirements so that they can also subscribe to Nigerian for Women project. The launch is going to happen anytime from now in the next couple of weeks. And then we look forward to working with states to ensure that we achieve all the intentions behind the implementation of this project. But it's exciting because it empowers women economically and it also helps to address all the six dimensions of poverty. And through this project, we're trying to also address issues like social norms, SGBV, access to markets, access to capital and so on and so forth.
Just yesterday, Hajiya, you emphasized building a bullying-free generation. Are there specific programs in your ministry implementing or that is being implemented to address this issue?
Bullying is a form of abuse. And like I told you, we're strengthening protocols of protection, not just for women or for families, but also for children. Because bullying is not just a form of abuse, but it also results to loss of lives in many cases. There's a campaign that Mr. President has launched, to see something, say something and do something. In the past, the stigma behind all this, you know, forms of abuse, people can't speak up. And when they speak up, sometimes nothing is being done about it. But we've reframed our commitment to ensuring that when something is being seen and said collectively, we'll do something. I would like to also, you know, take a whole of society approach to this. The law enforcement or the justice system can't do it alone. You know, it's also whole of society approach. We almost be alive to our responsibilities, from the family unit to our communities. You know, we must be able to also cultivate and nurture, you know, children, you know, from the home that would not align to practices along the lines of bullying and, you know, all forms of intimidation or abuse on our peers.
Interestingly.
The weight is on everybody, yeah.
Absolutely. Interestingly, today is World Menstrual Health Day, highlighting the importance of menstrual equity. What concrete steps has your ministry taken to ensure that no Nigerian girl is held behind in this regard? We've had conversations in the past where stakeholders have advocated that menstrual parts should be free, not condoms.
Okay, so beyond advocacy, beyond rolling our programs, beyond, you know, any other campaign, I think the ultimate goal is for free menstrual kits, free menstrual, you know, products for women. Because nobody wants to pay when they're menstruating. I think from the ministry, we've made so much progress. Just today, we've unveiled the manuals on, you know, the facilitator manuals on menstrual hygiene. As a ministry, we'll be running out a national action plan with a national policy on menstrual health. And also working with partners, there's advocacy efforts that is ongoing. We'll partner with UNICEF, WaterAid, NYSI, SKDL, many other partners, Promise COPS, to be more creative because it's very important that as a nation, we decide which way we go. There's a policy that's of zero taxes on Nigerian-made sanitary towels, but most of our sanitary towels have been imported, we're not producing enough and we have a lot of women. So we have to see it as an economic opportunity for the private sector. We have to address this issue intentionally and very strategically so that, you know, there's actually zero period poverty for our women. Because women in the grassroots are struggling when it comes to their menstrual hygiene or when it comes to their menstrual cycles. And we don't want it to be a burden, we want people to menstruate with pride.
Walk us through the specifics. Is there a timeline? Are you saying that women in Nigerians are going to get these parts for free?
That's the goal. There's no timeline because it's an effort that is ongoing and it's an effort that we commit to achieving. I know that with Mr. President's commitment to equity and to justice and his commitment towards the women's agenda, I know that anything is possible. So we're very optimistic.
I'm hoping that we're going to continue this conversation, especially as we look forward to what happens in the second half of this administration. But quickly, before we go, the establishment of a dedicated department for nutrition was recently announced. How does this initiative aim to improve maternal and child health outcomes?
This is a multi, there's a multi-sectoral approach to addressing maternal health issues and nutrition. So there's almost about five ministries. And also with the Office of the Vice President chairing the Committee on Nutrition. So it's a concerted effort and we're working as a block to ensure that we address issues of nutrition. It's a fundamental problem for the government. And from our family cohesion program as well, we have a component to address nutrition. We're in the process of setting up the ministry with the support of technical partners to ensure that we're complementing all the existing nutrition departments in other ministries and in other MDAs. And also we have the seven-seven-four nutrition program, which is a flagship program from the Office of the, under the chairmanship of the Office of the Vice President. So efforts are in place to ensure that we address issues around nutrition for our families, for the vulnerable group and also for the children.
But subsequently, when we were able to pull you from your busy shadow, we'll talk about, I'd like to hear your thoughts on the very poor woman representation that we have in politics and what you consider to be the most efficient strategy to help Nigeria in that regard, especially with all the African countries being able to reach that fifty percent ratio. But we have to go now. Minister of Women Affairs, Hajiya Imam Soleiman Ibrahim, thank you so much for talking to us and we wish you the very best.
Thank you so much for having me.
That's our show today, everyone. You can watch it again at midnight and at six AM tomorrow. I am Nifemi Oguntue.
It's the midpoint of President Bola Tshembile's administration and what a journey it has been so far. From the onset, this administration has prioritized the welfare and prosperity of Nigerians. It introduced various social protection interventions to reduce poverty and socioeconomic vulnerabilities in the population through its cash transfer programs. It also introduced a remarkable program called NELFUND, which provides interest-free loans for eligible students in tertiary institutions, breaking down financial barriers and empowering Nigerian students to pursue their academic aspirations. In addition, it sought to democratize access to consumer credit for Nigerians working population. These noteworthy programs have become a lifeline for Nigerians.
I thank God for government to help us, this money government give us. For me, I was a part of you do business, but I came back for my farm because I be farmer.
A guardroom of Nigerians at a town hall in Bari Area Council in the federal capital territory. Their attention is fixed on the area council personnel who distributes debit cards to those guarded. Each debit card contains the sum of seventy-five thousand naira, provided by the federal government under the National Social Investment Program to offer financial support to targeted poor and vulnerable households across the country.
We are here walking, sharing the presidential grant. As you can see around me, we have over five hundred, we have about, we have about three thousand beneficiary under Bari, of which we have paid for like about almost a thousand of them.
I came to Bari Town Hall today, in which I collected my money. I'm very happy. In fact, I've been looking for a way of getting money because this is a farming season. So by God's grace, I'm going to use this money in buying fertilizer and chemicals for my farm work.
I get seventy-two thousand today and I'm very happy with it. So, and it will go a long way in my business.
The recipients of the funds in the past have chatted into various endos.
I'm with those people that didn't give the hundred K by that time. So I really enjoy the money, so I'm a butcher. I used to say, I use that money to go and buy goods.
Alhamdulillah, the money, the money really help our life. We use it for our business. I'm a tailor. I use that money, really, I use that money to expand my business.
I'm really happy for the money they gave us. I'm very happy because it helped me a lot. I achieved more than before, I'm buying yard of hijab to sell in small pieces of a month, but now I used to buy in bulk.
I want to thank the government for the livelihood program, which they did, which I got hundred thousand. I use it to improve my business. I deal in phone accessories.
I got seventy-two thousand naira and I really appreciate. I use it to establish my business. Thank you so much and we still need more. We really appreciate you.
Over three million beneficiaries across the thirty-six states and the federal capital territory received the first trench of payments in twenty twenty-four. Additionally, more than one million beneficiaries have received three trenches and have exited the program. On April third, twenty twenty-four, President Bola Tshembile signed the Student Loans Act twenty twenty-four, establishing the Nigerian Education Loan Fund, NELFUND. This revolutionary initiative provides interest-free loans to eligible students in tertiary institutions, breaking down financial barriers and empowering Nigerian students to pursue their academic aspirations. As of the first quarter of twenty twenty-five, over forty-nine billion naira has been disbursed to institutions and students for fees and upkeep allowances. From east to west, north to south, the loan is a lifeline for Nigerian students.
It impacted positively, not only me, the whole student who applied the NELFUND. Because I forget when I call my parents to send money, like a monthly token, that upkeep that we have been receiving monthly and the school fees. Yeah, right now, myself, my parents have already reduced the burden from them. And I forget the time I called them because they really benefit us and we thank the Federation for this amazing project they bring to the students.
The Student Loan Fund has impacted me positively because coming from a family of six, my father is a trader and my mom is a secondary school teacher. So you can imagine the scenario, my family struggling to train us in university. So with the Student Loan Fund, it was able to make my parents the burden of paying our school fees, taking care of us, sending monthly allowance to us. The burden was just relieved on their shoulder.
The student loan is quite impressive because, let me say, according to the hardships in the country and sometimes our parents, they might be like, let me say, they would not be like financially stable. But with the student loan, we have been able to like manage, take some things, settle some bills ourselves and then, from the student loan, I think it's quite impressive.
It has made my academic life easier because they will not be like, I will not be finding to pay my school fees and I focus more my academics.
Taking this NELFUND loan is worth it because it has released a lot of burden from my parents, who had to work very, very hard to pay for my school fees. And for me too, who also have to work very hard to add to the one that they have to give me then, it's worth it. It's really worth it.
Before, I don't believe it until I received a message from the mentor that I qualified for the loan and I proceed in the registration. Yeah, it was very easy, but because the process is not that much and it does not require any strength, no interest, no stress, just click on the link and follow the procedure.
Actually, that NELFUND has been a huge relief to my academic activity. It's not only me, but many students because like it's something that will cover your tuition fee completely. And maybe during the application, if you add upkeep, you'll be receiving a monthly stipend upkeep of twenty twenty thousand every month. So more especially, that monthly upkeep, twenty twenty thousand is a lifesaver.
We have a total sum of nine million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand naira being credited to the school accounts as NELFUND loan for students. So far, we have one fifty students that have benefited. Because, you know, before you can meet up with the criteria, our students are more than this. But before you can meet up with the criteria, you have to do your registration, then you have to do the things online. So at the end of the day, we have only one fifty of them that qualified. Though it's not all of them that applied, but we are still encouraging them. But as at the last money received, credited to the account, we have one fifty-eight beneficiaries on record.
The Presidential Compressed Natural Gas Initiative is another bold initiative by the President Bola Tshembile administration, directed at providing relief to Nigerians as a result of the removal of fuel subsidy, which has seen an increase in the cost of fuel. It provides the adoption of alternative sources of fuel, primarily compressed natural gas, to both public and private transportation to reduce and manage transportation costs for Nigerians.
The CNG is very interesting and I'm advising Nigerians that have no opportunity to have that opportunity to do it. Because when I was using fuel, I can buy fuel of twelve thousand naira. Because when I was using fuel, I can buy fuel of twelve thousand naira and I make just like twenty-seven thousand or thirty thousand. But this time around, I can buy CNG for two thousand seven, two thousand five, and I can make it up to twenty-five thousand naira again. So it is very interesting. So I encourage Nigerians to do it.
I convert my car to CNG last, last month ending. So since when I convert my car, I de-buy fuel twenty-five thousand in a day. But now I buy gas of three thousand in a day. And if I buy gas of three thousand, I make, I make twenty-five thousand with it. If I buy fuel of twenty-five thousand, I make twenty-eight thousand with it. So I thank federal government for giving me this opportunity.
I do this conversion on eighteen April. And some people, they say the CNG will make you to knock. It's a lie, totally lie. I'm advise many people, this is the right time now to everybody to come and join and get this CNG.
The CNG is okay to me and my partner. It has made us to reduce the transportation fare to the customers from one hundred percent to seventy-five percent.
Improving access to consumer credit for Nigerians working population is one of the key agendas of the President Tinubu's administration, hence the establishment of the Nigerian Consumer Credit Corporation, Credit Call.
I want to use this opportunity to thank Bola Ahmed, our President Bola Ahmed Tinubu for this initiative. And I pray he should do more. And I didn't know that I can get loan from federal government without no connection, without no collateral.
Without this money, now I don't know, people were, were looking for money in there. But it brought that opportunity and I benefited from it. No collateral, nothing, nothing. You just get it like that without any, for me, without anybody's help. You can do it yourself.
We were given a DTI and KYC form to fill. In less than a few minutes, I got a message that I'm qualified to get the loan I requested for. And in the next minute, I got my loan alert from my bank.
It was easy and affordable.
They should not take me like ten hours when the loan was disbursed into my account.
We were told that the consumer credit, which is an initiative of the federal government of Nigeria, that the federal government has directed them to give this loan out at a very reduced interest rate.
I even use it to finish some of my building that I'm building in the village. I did not know anybody. I apply online.
Thank you, Mr. President, for this initiative.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Credit Call's mandate is to strengthen Nigeria's consumer credit infrastructure and provide wholesale funding and credit guarantees to financial institutions. So far, the sum of fifteen billion naira has been lent to over thirty-five thousand beneficiaries in the six geopolitical zones, with sixty-three percent of them being first-time borrowers.
So I really enjoy the money.
I get seventy-two thousand.
They apply online, easy and affordable.
I convert my car to CNG last, last month ending.
Student Loan Fund, it just required only the school admission letter.
At TVC News, wherever the big news story is happening, we're geared up to break it. TVC News, first with breaking.
General Yakub Gouan, President Bola Tinubu, joined all the regional leaders to reflect on the journey of ECOWAS in the last fifty years. Court admits three videos of Inamdekanos radio BAFA transmitter allegedly smuggled into the country. Outside Nigeria, Israeli Prime Minister confirms killing of Hamas leader in a ceasefire. More than twenty persons killed and fresh attack on Gaza. Sport Chelsea Eye European History in Conference League Final. Hello everyone, welcome to TVC News at Seven. I am Nifemi Oguntue.
This celebration would not only be a moment of rejoicing, but also a moment of reflection and introspection.
One who joined all the ECOWAS leaders today to reflect on the journey and development of the regional bloc in the fifty years of its existence. President Bola Tinubu, as chairman of ECOWAS, promised to governize political will and resources to promote growth and development of the region. Fifty years after the ECOWAS treaty was signed by fifteen countries, thirty countries have opted out of the region.
Our peaceful co-assistant, that vision is still alive today. We thank God, we have the thinkers, we have the wise men. We have the opportunity. Today, we pay tribute to all who have nurtured it, especially you, General Dr. Yakubu Gouan, GCFR, our only surviving father and a symbol of this historic journey.
TVC News State House correspondent Nifemi Akondi covered that event in Lagos. He joins me now for more on what he saw. General Yakub Gouan is the only surviving founding father of the regional bloc and he had this time not only to be celebrated but to speak. How did you capture that moment and what stood out for you?
Well, Nifemi, it was a nostalgic feeling for General Yakubu Gouan, you know, recalling the events that shaped the signing of that treaty fifty years ago in nineteen-seventy-five, exactly at the Nigerian Institute of International Affairs, you know, where that treaty was signed. He said it was a conversation between him and Nyasimbe Nyadema, then president of Togo. You're talking about how they could build regional cooperation, strengthen trade ties among countries within the West African region. And that was what gave birth to the signing of that treaty of the Economic Community of West African States, where fifty countries within the region came together and agreed to strengthen cooperation. Yakubu Gouan as the, as the last founding father, the remaining founding father alive among those who signed that treaty in nineteen-seventy-five was quite significant. And for him returning to that place, he talked to other leaders of ECOWAS, telling them about, you know, how that event was done in nineteen-seventy-five. There was a reenactment of that event. Where we don't know if it was exactly the same way it happened in nineteen-seventy-five. But Yakubu Gouan was there to, you know, guide them through his, he could still recollect the events of nineteen-seventy-five, how it was signed, where they all sat. But sadly, in nineteen-seventy-five, fifteen countries signed that treaty. And exactly fifty years after then, when ECOWAS is celebrating this golden jubilee, three countries among the fifteen that signed the treaty in nineteen-seventy-five have pulled out of the ECOWAS bloc, that is Niger, Burkina Faso and Mali due to political differences. And you recall also, that is because of ECOWAS insistence that they must return to democratic rule after the unconstitutional change of government, which ECOWAS stoutly stood against, Nifemi.
One of the highlights of the golden jubilee celebration has to do with the reenactment of the Lagos treaty. We'll talk about that shortly. We now have your package from that event.
Fifty years after a treaty for regional cooperation was signed, ECOWAS leaders returned to where it all started. It was nostalgic, particularly for General Yakubu Gouan, who is the last of the founding fathers alive. This was an event to also reflect on the journey of regional cooperation and restrategize unsettling realistic goals for the future.
The post-Cold War era is over. New divisions are emerging. Technology is advancing at an extraordinary pace. The pressure on the old order is intense. It does not mean the arguments for multilateralism are diminished. On the contrary, we need ECOWAS more than ever to meet the challenge of unfiltered data, unregulated cryptocurrency, AI, climate change, organized crime, cyber slavery and human trafficking and violent extremism.
Today, we have gathered here to celebrate five decades of regional solidarity, of standing side by side through times of hope and hardship, of building the most integrated regional economic community on the African continent. Today, ECOWAS represents more than an institution. It is a symbol of the enduring aspiration of over four hundred million citizens. President Bola Tinubu, as chairman of the Authority of ECOWAS Heads of Government, declared his commitment to the ideals and philosophies of ECOWAS founding fathers.
We are embracing innovation to drive growth from internet exchanges, platform like ECOGO, which strengthen gender reporting and regional accountability. Despite our progress, challenges remain. Our greatest task now is implementation. We are lagging behind on implementation. And I urge all members, all member states to match policy with action.
General Yakubu Gouan still has fond memories of the nineteen-seventy-five ECOWAS treaty. He acknowledged the resilience and unity of the regional bloc.
I can assure you, this was the view since when we started it. Yes, there are military, there are other democratic in the government. But the military are making sure that we do things democratically, but militarily democratic.
Fifty years after the ECOWAS treaty was signed by fifteen countries, three countries have opted out of the regional bloc due to political disagreements.
Beyond commemorating a treaty that was signed in nineteen-seventy-five establishing ECOWAS, there are deeper issues now affecting the regional bloc such as poor education, healthcare insecurity and the big elephant in the room, which is unconstitutional takeover of government. The regional bloc will have to deal with these issues affecting cooperation and integration in West Africa. Nifemi Akondi, TVC News, Lagos.
Joining Nifemi and me on the news is trade lawyer and consultant for ECOWAS, Dr. Ken Okoa, live from Cordova. Dr. Okoa, fifty years ago, the Lagos treaty set the foundation for economic integration and free movement across West Africa. Today, we are seeing border closures, tariff disputes and security breakdowns. What do you think has changed? Has the regional bloc drifted from the spirit of the treaty? Or it simply failed to evolve with modern realities?
Thank you very much. First of all, I need to thank God for sustaining the regional entity called ECOWAS. And I think we can proudly say that today, being the fiftieth anniversary, the labels of our heroes passed have not been in vain. And I give you some monuments to disclaim. Fifty years back, and today, we can see that all analyses move towards the indication that ECOWAS, among the eight regional communities, regional economic communities in Africa, recognized under the African Union, ECOWAS stands tall as the most integrated in terms of economy, in terms of even politics. And I also would inform you and anyone that, you know, wants to listen, that, you know, policy harmonization efforts at the level of ECOWAS has also helped in integrating the region and moving us towards a more contiguous family kind of structure. We have people come together to do a handshake, resorting into poverty reduction and a lot of that. But quickly getting to your question. There are few things that have, you know, started happening. And of course, life is dynamic. These are emerging issues that nobody envisaged fifty years back. Nobody envisaged some of these things twenty years back. They will come in, climate change was not envisaged, I mean, years back. They are coming in, transhumans, hadas, farmers' crisis. They were not envisaged to this point, to this extent. They are coming in. So, and because this is a dynamic organization, all of us must also put hands together to ensure that all of these are also put back, you know, to where they come from. And I think that ECOWAS has made some very key, you know, monumental, if you like, improvements in the life of West African citizens.
All right, let me bring back our state house correspondent to this conversation. Nifemi, earlier you talked about the exit of Mali, Burkina Faso and Niger. And of course, I'm sure you are aware that they now impose a zero-point-five percent tariff increase on West African countries. You were at that event today. How serious were stakeholders about this development? And did they come up with a different strategy from what we hear often?
Well, Nifemi, most of these discussions are done at the ministerial level. What we had today was just a commemoration of the fiftieth anniversary of ECOWAS, the golden jubilee, celebrating how far the regional bloc has come. You know, they're pioneering regional cooperation in Africa, ahead of the South African Development, Southern African Development Commission and also the Economic Community of Central African States, ECAS. You know, ECOWAS has been outstanding and, you know, sets the pace or raised the bar of regional cooperation. And this was emulated by other regions in Africa. So all they did today was just to celebrate, you know, the milestone achieved by the regional bloc. And they are also aware of the issues, especially the three countries that have pulled out of the regional bloc, but they have not entirely severed ties with these countries. They are still in talks with Mali, with Burkina Faso and Niger Republic. You recall that just about two weeks ago, the ambassador of the Republic of Mali to Nigeria came to present his letter of credence to President Bola Tinubu and specifically told them that he does not want them to, you know, close all doors to communication between the two countries. That is important for them to still open those channels of communication to ECOWAS because this regional cooperation is very important. It doesn't matter if they have pulled out of the Sahel states or wherever they claim to belong to now. What is important is the common borders they share with countries within the West African region.
Absolutely.
And ECOWAS is still very central to their development.
Well, that's a conversation that we're going to continue to have, especially saying that it's the same narrative we've heard from them since they exited the regional bloc. But Dr. Okoa, before we go, we understand that the Lagos treaty is being ceremonially reenacted. As someone deeply familiar with ECOWAS trade law, is there anything legally binding or reformative about this reenactment? Or is this more symbolic than substantive?
It is actually a very symbolic approach. And I think it resonates to the monument of having a golden jubilee. It's a kind of recall, it's a kind of remembrance. So that, you know, people will remember that, look, at this time, fifty years back, we had a Lagos block action that metamorphosed or midwived ECOWAS, the institution that is bringing people together today. And of course, I would like to say this, very importantly, you know, when we talk about ECOWAS today, we cannot quickly forget some of the things that have been, I mean, that have happened. For instance, For instance, that ECOWAS was the one that set up ECOMOG as an institution that rescued Liberia, rescued Sierra Leone from the hostels of, you know, kind of Holocaust that would have been. And today, that ECOWAS is also an institution where you have, you know, the food security that is at the base, at the monument, as a kind of foundation of its character in terms of bringing the member states together and looking at policies that will make sure that we do not look like some countries, like Somalia and all of that, where you have a food shortage and all of that happening. So these are things that we should begin to also celebrate. And I think that when we, in, 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 in ECOWAS and the 50 years, we should also begin to look at sovereignty and supranationality of its laws.
Dr Ken.
And the member countries sovereign and are disobvious. Thank you.
We'll continue this conversation subsequently. Dr Ken Okoa, his trade lawyer and consultant, ECOWAS, Femi Akondi, still house correspondent. Gentlemen, thank you for joining the conversation.
Thank you very much.
This celebration would not only be a moment of rejoicing, but also a moment of reflection and introspection.
Still ahead on TV Sunday, user seven, many stuff the FCT clarifies reports of suicide bomber incident in Abuja. We have that story and more shortly. Don't go away.
Two years of purposeful leadership, two years of renewed hope, two years of sustained onslaught on bad roads and renewal of our road. Under the visionary leadership of President Bola Ametun of GCFR, Nigeria is moving forward stronger, safer and more hopeful than ever before. Thanks to the renewed hope agenda, the Federal Roads Maintenance Agency, FEMEA, has over the past two years sustained maintenance operations on our network across the nation, connecting destinations and ensuring smoother, safer journeys for all Nigerians. FEMEA remains steadfast in its commitment to contributing our beat to renewed hope infrastructure renewal drive on our road and sustaining national progress under your excellency's strategic guidance. Congratulations, Mr President. We remain a veritable tool in paving the way to greater Nigeria. FEMEA, think good roads, think FEMEA. Dr Emeka Agbasi, MDCEO, FEMEA.
Coleman Wires and Cable, great quality, now with a new look.
Brought to you by the National Orientation Agency, NOA.
You're watching TV Sunday, user seven, the rebound of our top stories tonight. General Yakubu Gouan, President Bola Tinubu joined all the regional leaders to reflect on the journey of ECOWAS in the last 50 years. Courts admit three videos of Inamdekanu's radio Beafra transmitter allegedly smuggled into the country. Israeli prime minister confirms killing of Hamas leader in its airstrike. More than 20 persons killed and fresh attack on Gaza. And coming up in sports, Chelsea, our European history in Conference League final. Former president Muhammadu Buhari has asked Nigerians to continue to support government policies as President Tinubu marks his second year in office. The former president congratulated President Tinubu, emphasizing that the country should be reminded that leadership is a continuous journey. The former president expressed support for the ongoing efforts by the administration to curb poverty and inflation, which it says have hit the poorest families. He also mentioned that reforms would achieve success gradually and not overnight. He emphasized that the responsibility of solving the challenges should not rest solely on government, but the private sector and all citizens must join in our ways. Minister of the Federal Capital Territory, Eesam Wike, has clarified that the rumored suicide bomber incident never occurred in the FCT. He stated this during an inspection tour of some projects due for commissioning in Abuja. He explained that an ignorant individual had put explosives used for rock blasting in his pocket, which led to him sustaining some degree of injuries.
The security nervous said it's a suicide bomber. And so I would not go and create a pressure and make people fear the people. You should try to do what we call investigative journalism. No, Nema is not FCT, Nema is not the head of security. Security agencies are there. What happened there was somebody went to where we have these, um, uh, queries, you know, where they blast all these rocks and took the explosive and put it in his, uh, his pocket. Of course, some of them may not even understand the implication of that. And so it exploded on him. And so that has nothing that is a suicide bomber.
And now to politics, National Secretary of the People's Democratic Party, Samelanyawu, is insisting the party never held a NEC meeting. He says the Independent National Electoral Commission was clear on the correspondences and the statutory signatory that is recognized and anything against that is null and void. Habib Delawal, ask more.
PDP is not part of the coalition. I said it earlier before the governors made their own statements. I was the first person. I don't know who attended that interview. I said we are not part of the majority.
The contest for power and control of the PDP is throwing up different twists and complexities. This has also raised concerns about the possibility of mending fences and uniting the party ahead of the 2027 general election, with Mr Samelanyawu alleging that certain forces with selfish interests are knowingly paving the way for the APC.
And nobody can send a document outside me. They can find it themselves. I mean, it was mad I went there for example. After doubting other submissions of people that wanted to find out. Yet, I sent a message because I know that committee of Saraki is still meeting and they were supposed to end up. I now send out a letter signed by me that the NEC is postponed, pending when the support for the lies that they stand. So what did I say? There was not NEC. It was a stakeholder's meeting. Because the NEC, I did not sign for it.
Samelanyawu defended his position stating that he was elected in a credible and transparent process that was sanctioned by the Independent National Electoral Commission.
The legal advice I gave is a legal opinion. They say it's not true. Now, even who says it's not true, but they says, went to INEC and INEC confirmed to them. So you now went to a stakeholders meeting instead of you to say, well, of course, I need to open. At the time, I would demand an apology because I've gone through psychological trauma, unnecessary blackmail, media blackmail, it sucks. Because I don't really talk, because I'm not the public secretary of the party. So I cannot talk to the press all the time.
Many suggest that this discord could have far reaching implications for the PDP's electoral performance, particularly as it looks to garner its support ahead of the general elections with a convention in view for August this year. Party insiders have hinted that a likely replacement for the National Secretary is in view. Habib Delawal, TVC News, Abuja.
And now to the National Assembly, the House of Representatives says a repeal and reenactment of the Minister of Finance Incorporated Act has become necessary to reposition the agency and enable it to effectively discharge its responsibilities. And this is just as the House Committee on Digital and Information Technology took public input into two establishment bills. Dr Ken Dsera reports.
Increased revenue generation.
The Joint Committee of the House on Finance and Public Assets hosts the management team of MUFI, a subsidiary of the Federal Ministry of Finance. The bill seeks to repeal the MUFI Act of 2004 and enact a new law. The Chairman Committee on Finance, James Faliki, explained that MUFI, established in 1959 as a corporate entity to manage federal government investments and properties, has failed to meet its mandate due to structural deficiencies and operational inefficiencies.
The House Committee of Finance processes public, a veritable legislative platform for governance, public opinion on the way forward and the discharge of its legislative assignments to ensure effective passage of the bill.
The leadership of MUFI said the agency has significantly grown the asset base under its management from 1.25 trillion naira in early 2023 to over 18 trillion naira.
Large number of assets that are sprinkled not only within Nigeria, but outside Nigeria. However, it becomes extremely difficult to account for those in a way that is verifiable for accountability and transparency without having a structure.
To judicial matters now, Justice James Umatosho has adjourned till 29th of May for ruling on the trial within trial conducted in the federal government's case against leader of the indigenous people of Beafra, Inamdekanu. The day's proceedings commenced with the prosecution calling its third witness. The witness, a DSS official with 27 years of service, says Inamdekanu used his broadcast on radio Beafra to cause violence allegedly. Inamdekanu told the court that the statements he gave at the DSS headquarters were on the dura's as it was coerced into it. He alleged the coercion started from Lagos when it was transported from Lagos to Abuja in blindfolds. Inamdekanu also claimed that Mr Brown, the person who investigated him, had threatened him that he would remain in dungeon. Talking health now, management of a leading pediatric cancer treatment center in the United States is partnering with the NSIA Luth Cancer Center. The initiative aims to improve cancer treatment in Nigeria and enhance healthcare outcomes. We have more in this report.
Childhood should be filled with dreams, laughter and limitless possibilities. But for some, these hopes are interrupted by hospital visits, chemotherapy and the weight of a life-threatening illness. According to the World Health Organization, an estimated 400,000 children and adolescents between the ages of zero and 19 develop cancer every year. In a move to reduce this burden, St Jude's Children's Research Hospital is collaborating with the NSIA Luth Cancer Center in a partnership aimed at improving treatment outcomes and driving innovation in pediatric cancer care.
The incidence of cancer is rising. It is rising globally and so not just in Nigeria. But the incidence is rising higher in a country like us, in low and middle income countries such as Nigeria, and is also rising in younger people. And for that reason, that is the, it's essential to have partnerships like this so that we can very quickly begin to improve the quality of care that people living with cancer receive in this country.
The initiative also seeks to strengthen medical research and expand healthcare infrastructure, ultimately increasing survival rates among children diagnosed with cancer.
Nigerian children will not have access to a platform where there is training for their physicians, where they have access to drugs and ultimately they will get the right kind of treatment. And over the next five years, we will then begin to have outcomes that we would all celebrate and rejoice over.
During a walking visit to the facility, the director for Sub-Saharan Africa at St Jude's, Dr Nikhil Bacta, toured the Luth Cancer Center units.
So there's all of these really incredible pieces that are here. And what I'm really excited about is that they're starting to come together now because in order to treat a child with cancer, you have to be able to have all of them working together in concert. And our goal is that no child should die at the dawn of life. And when I say that, I don't mean that no child should die at the dawn of life in Memphis, Tennessee, where I'm from, or in the United States. But that means that no child anywhere should die at the dawn of life.
With strategic partnerships like this taking shape, healthcare experts say the collaboration is a significant step towards saving more young lives from cancer. Zainab Akondi, TVC News, Lagos.
Adaba FM, a subsidiary of TVC Communications, joined millions of Nigerians in celebrating this year's Children's Day. A celebration took place at the station's premises, attracting children from various parts of the state. Ayodji Moradeo, ask more.
This year's celebration organized by Adaba 88.9 FM was filled with joy as children gathered at a station in Ilaramoki. It was a wonderful opportunity for children to celebrate and socialize. Then featured performances by schoolchildren, motivational talks and a presentation of gifts. General manager of Adaba FM, Sam Martins Ayala, emphasized that children are treasures whose growth and development should be nurtured with care and purpose. He highlighted vital role children play in community development and the importance of providing them with support.
We just want to join the international community to celebrate our youth and our children. It's a thing of joy that these children are our heritage and our future. So this special day that is dedicated to them, we want to be part of the celebration. Parents outside there, just take good care of your children because they are our future.
Others who spoke at the event commended Adaba FM management for organizing the program.
Ever since working towards to nurture those young ones, if we do that, we can be proud of.
Courage the children towards a better future. I think it's all about developing the future.
A highlight of the day was the presentation of gifts to children who participated in various competitions.
I feel kind, it's kind of nice because it's an opportunity to be here celebrating Children's Day with other students of different walks of life. I've learned that no matter how small I am or how big I am, I should value that I'm a child and I'm celebrated today.
To discover different points of views of people when it comes to children with dreams. I realized that it requires more than one person to be able to achieve a dream.
Adaba FM's Children's Day event reaffirmed the station's commitment to promoting child development and community engagement. Ayodji Moradeo, TVC News.
The Ayawo Forum has opposed the proposed amendment to the Ayawo State Council of Obas and Chief's Law. The forum says the introduction of a rotational chairmanship undermines the historical and cultural significance of the Alafi. In a statement signed by the forum's chairman, Shagon Olabi, the group warns Governor Shei Makinde to withhold assent from the bill, which is currently awaiting executive approval following its passage by the State House of Assembly. The forum argued that the Alafin stool is more than a state institution, serving as a symbol of ancestral heritage for the entire Eurovaris. The bill, co-sponsored by the Speaker, Adibo Kundui, and four other lawmakers, proposes amendments to the Council of Obas law, including a provision to rotate the council's leadership among traditional rulers in the state. Emo Sim, Nigeria's first outband travel eSIM has been launched. This homegrown innovation will revolutionize global connectivity for travelers.
Imagine having voice calls, SMS and mobile data plans in more than 190 countries with 600 network operators on mobile devices without the hassle of physical SIM cards or outrageous roaming charges. That's what the Emo SIM offers to its customers. This event marks a historic moment where Nigerians can now have one eSIM for all travels.
Why others see barrier, we see blueprints. Why others talk of limitations, we build solution. Emo SIM stand proudly in this legacy, a Nigerian solution to a global challenge. This is not magic, but Nigerian identity engineered for rehabilitation. This is not magic, but Nigerian identity engineered for rehabilitation designed for each and every one of us.
EmoSim gives you the freedom to roam the world without worrying about swapping a SIM card or about expensive roaming charges. You don't need a physical SIM card. You simply scan a QR code and you install the eSIM on a compatible device.
It is the first outbound call and travel eSIM from Nigeria. EmoSim offers competitively priced prepaid bundles, no contracts or surprise charges, and you can also pay in different currencies.
Many of those entities who have fly did not get the license. Quite a few like EmoSim got it because they deserve to get it. And I must say, EmoSim stands out high in the pack.
It shows that Nigeria has grown in terms of technology. And for Tata to want to partner with EmoSim, it shows they all believe in the country, they all believe in our process, they all believe in our people. And this also aligns with the policy of government.
I think EmoSim has come here with a solution that answers a common problem that confronts every traveler. The fact that this is coming from a Nigerian company, by Nigerians of course with the support of Tata, I think it brings a kind of confidence that good things can come from Nigeria.
So having EmoSim today is turning that hope, being by fear that is now real, starting so you can get a SIM, be anywhere in the world, reach your family and loved ones.
There are two simple methods to installing an eSIM on your device. You can either open your device settings and check for connections, look for SIM manager or SIM setting, tap on the activation code you received and your eSIM will be activated. Or just go to mobile services option on your device, tap on add eSIM, tap on the QR code option, just scan the code and activate your eSIM.
In business news, the Federal Ireland Revenue Service's RFM, that's commitment to addressing critical challenges such as infrastructure, stakeholder education, and cross-border integration ahead of the national launch of its electronic invoicing platform set for July 2025. This assurance was given during a stakeholder engagement session held in Lagos with oil and gas industry players as part of FRS' phased rollout of its e-invoicing initiative aimed at modernizing Nigeria's tax administration through digital transformation. Mike Atoga, Acting Director of Tax Automation at FRS, highlighted the potential of the e-invoicing system to deliver real-time transaction visibility across sectors, thereby boosting tax compliance.
Customers. So the idea is that once those financial transactions happens and FRS is powering this with its own technology, we are aware of it and you know, the tax implications are already known to FRS. So it makes, it makes taxation and the process of, you know, getting taxpayers to comply easier because we already have this information from the ecosystem of the invoicing.
We ensure that this system follows the best international, best practices and is an, it's our playbook model. We've ensured that we've not also deprived taxpayer the ability to file, even if the system is connected directly into their natural system. So you still have that flexibility to choose whether you want to report real time or near real time.
It's extremely critical in the sense that we're going to have data of transactions, data of business transactions, and that data could be used across several sectors, even in security. It's going to be used by businesses to understand the market trend, you understand the purchasing trend and all of that.
In a fast-evolving world of business, multi-generational leadership is becoming more of a necessity. This was one of the fallout of the Chartered Institute of Directors Nigeria Fellows launching held in Lagos. Speaking at the event, Chairman Greenwich Metal Bank, Kadi Falawo, emphasized the value of age diverse boards, baby boomers, Gen X, millennials, and Gen Z. He noted that they bring a wide range of strengths and experiences and deliver 5% to 10% higher returns compared to their less diverse counterparts.
One word for this is inclusiveness. When you say inclusiveness, different stratas, they're old, they're young, they're not too young, you bring them in because each generation has value to add to a particular board, okay? So if you recognize the value from each of the generation, a good board will make sure you have this strata of different age groups.
There are downsides, significant downsides, to having a board that is not well diversified in terms of generation. So the first thing, like I said, is take a conscious effort to do it. Second is identify the gaps that are missing, identify the generations where those gaps are missing, and then put a process in place to seek for people, people who can fill those gaps. The most difficult thing to accept is change. People don't want to change in some instances, okay? If really when you go very, I mean, high up there, like somebody pointed out at the, I mean, at the event today, that, I mean, how can you get young people to tell you what you're supposed to do? Because somebody says, what an old man can see, sit down, a young man cannot see, and he stands up. But the truth is, he said technologically, what that young man can see, the old man cannot see.
The Nigerian Shipping Council is intensifying efforts to eliminate deposit charges on consignment, a move aimed at easing the burden on Nigerian importers. The Minister of Marine and Blue Economy has also directed the council to address the issue as a matter of urgency. Neo Business correspondent Ifunaya Eze reports.
At the council's 2025 Public Relations Unit Retreat held in Lagos, Executive Secretary Mr. Pios Akuta revealed ongoing engagements with shipping companies advocating for alternatives like insurance policies to replace the current deposit system. He described the charges as a longstanding concern for importers, citing the cumbersome refund process and instances of unclaimed deposits. Mr. Akuta praised CMA CGM for leading the way by scrapping the charges entirely. A move, he says, came after fruitful discussions with the council.
We've been on this over some time now. The Honorable Minister has directed us to look into that as quickly as possible and see how we can resolve that. So we have engaged with the shipping companies, we have engaged with some other companies also who are planning to have an insurance policy to cover that rather than have the deposit. So we've been speaking with most of these shipping companies and for CMA CGM, we have engaged with them even privately also to discuss this issue of container deposit, and they have taken the bulls by the horns.
In legislative progress, Mr. Akuta gave an update on the Nigerian Port Economic Regulatory Agency Bill, noting it has passed both chambers of the National Assembly.
The process of working on the bill internally to put it in the proper perspective that can be sent to the presidency for asset is just concluded recently. So we are hopeful that the National Assembly will forward that to the President for asset in a few weeks to come. We are looking at efficiency of the sector, which everyone has complained about. This bill has come to create that efficiency in the sector, and it has come to protect the investment, also prevents those who are not serious about the sector from coming, especially those that will come and mess up things.
He also commended the council's Public Relations Unit for its outstanding work and emphasized continuous training to maintain high standards. Ifunanya Eze, TVC News, Lagos.
Sport news is next with Mia Nakiri.
I will start sports news with football. Real Betis Ballonpier and Chelsea lock on for the first time since the year 2005, where the pair were drawn together in the UEFA Champions League group stage. Betis won the last fixture 1-0 on Umtah, while Chelsea eased to a 4-0 victory in the reverse fixture. The fixture represents a chance for Chelsea men's side to lift their first piece of silverware under new owner Tod Boele. We have details in this report.
The second of three major European finals takes place in Poland on Wednesday, with Chelsea hoping to cap their fourth place finish in the Premier League with silverware when they face Real Betis in the UEFA Conference League final. Chelsea have taken the competition seriously and now have history in their sights, having won the UEFA Cup Winners' Cup, the UEFA Champions League, and the Europa League. They could become the first team in history to win four different major UEFA tournaments. Real Betis, on the other hand, have a host of doubts, including ex-Tottenham midfielder Giovani Lo Celso. Former Arsenal defender Hector Bellerin will not feature due to injury, while Marco Roca, Diego Lorient, have also been rolled out. De La Liga sides hopes of victory rest on the shoulders of Isco and unload Manchester United winger Anthony, who has enjoyed a fruitful loan spell since making the switch and genre transfer window.
The main target is, is for sure is also, you know, for personally, it's important, but the main target is to, 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 to win again a European competition with, with Chelsea. I think it's something important for the club in this moment, for the, you know, for the fans, for everyone, because means that we are going in the right direction. And personally, I will try to prepare the game exactly in the same way I prepare all the rest because I consider every game important. For sure, it's a final that at the end, you know, decide the title, but we're going to try to prepare the game in our best and hopefully we can, we can win the title.
The phone book points to one outcome in Poland. Mareska Saez finished the Premier League season very strongly, winning four of their last five games, including beating Liverpool, Manchester United, and Nottingham Forest. Betis, on the other side, have failed to win any of the last four games and suffered a heavy loss away at Atletico Madrid 10 days after overcoming Fiorentina to book their place in the final.
The match between the Supercorps of Nigeria and the Black Stars of Ghana has just kicked off in the first minute at the Gtech Community Stadium, home of Brentford Football Club. Ten players from the Nigeria Premier Football League, including Canopila's veteran Ahmed Musa, are competing with foreign professionals for starting bets in the four-nation friendly tournament. But we can confirm that Remo Star's player, Sadiq Smiler, is one of three NPFL players in the starting lineup against the West African rivals. But new Supercorps invitee Felix Agou, who applies a straight for Vida Bremen in the German Bundesliga, starts from the bench, and in an exclusive interview with TVC News, he confirmed why switched nationality.
Very good, like everyone accepted me pretty well. We spent like one training session already. And yeah, it's, it's nice being here. I'm happy, happy to be, to be called up and I'm enjoying my time. I had the first contact with the, with the federation. I right away wanted to speak to the coach and I had good talks with the, with the coaching staff. And yeah, then once, once we had the call, it was pretty easy decision for me to, to come here because it's a good way also to, to connect also with the, with my Nigerian side, with my, with my roots.
Can confirm that Bayer Leverkusen defender Nathan Teller says he's happy to be back in the Supercorps. He also spoke on the season so far with Javier Alonso, who has left for Real Madrid Football Club as their new coach.
New match commentator Kevin Hatchard alongside the former. Oh, what up!
There's been this perception that I didn't want to play for the national team, and that's never been the case. I've just been unfortunate with an injury happening the last time I got called up, but you know, I'm happy, I'm happy to be here, happy to be back and always happy and honored to represent. I mean, it gives me a chance to connect, connect to my roots, represent the country, my family, myself, and gives me a chance to play with pride. You know, I'm able to play for the country and I'm, for my country, sorry, I'm able to play with some of the best players in the country. So it's a brilliant opportunity for me to improve as a player and also experience new things. It's been frustrating looking in, watching what's happening with the team because I know how hard we want to, we want to work and how much we want to get to the World Cup and, you know, so we can only focus on what we can control. Now is a chance for us to, you know, make it right, play some games, win some games. And I'm always wanting to play games and you know, this is one of the biggest rivalries in Africa, so to be a part of it is always a special feeling for me. I mean, it's been, we've had moments where we were really good, we've had some moments where we were struggling, but overall, I think we can still be happy with how the season was, you know, to finish second in the Bundesliga is still a brilliant achievement. We knew we'd have difficulties this year, but you know, we were able to, we're able to still at least finish second and you know.
Nigerians have commented the Nigeria Football Federation for engaging the Supercorps ahead of the 2026 FIFA World Cup qualifying matches. Senior Special Advisor to the President on Grassroots Sports Development says it helps the technical crew to select the best legs for the qualifiers. We have details in this report and Nifem Ogunto here will continue with the news after that. Nigeria's Supercorps and the Black Stars of Ghana will be participating in the Unity Cup in London, a tournament which serves as preparation for the World Cup qualifiers in September. Nigeria's quest for the ticket took heat after the Eagles were held to a 1-0 draw by Zimbabwe. The Eric Chell-led side now sits in fourth position on the log, but the senior special advisor to President Bolatilubu on Grassroots Sports Development, Anthony Adeboye, says the Eagles will be at the World Cup.
Two matches, four points compared to four matches, two points, vastly different. It shows we've gotten someone that really have interest of our country, that really mean business, playing international friendly matches, shows is ready to give us that ticket, that important ticket of qualifying Nigerian to the next World Cup. And have that belief, have that trust. We watch our president, I assure you what Ahmed in Ombu DCFL is doing in the coaching sport, putting everything on sport. It shows we have a very better and brighter future.
He says the president will be supporting the Eagles in their quest for qualification.
The president, I assure you, Bolat Ahmed in Ombu DCFL, have done excellently when talking of sport. The renewal of agenda have shown a lot for all Nigerians to look into his program, particularly sport. I want to assure all Nigerians that we should have that belief. Man proposes, God disposes. He's very, very keen in life. Our own belief and with hard work and dedication, we have that belief, Nigerians will qualify.
We know that we are, we are there already, but I believe that we will qualify with the, with the South Africa team. You just forget it, I believe that we will qualify. Across the team, we will do it where we will qualify.
Anthony commented on the national sports festival, saying the federations are monitoring young talents.
It shows we have a lot of talent in this country. It shows if you are fully prepared, you're going to get this right. And so far, so good, Ogun State have made us to discover a lot of talent at this 22nd sports festival.
With an eye on the 2026 World Cup ticket, Coach Eric Chell, who has included our best players in the squad, will be open to get the best legs for the qualifiers in September. Mia Nakiri, TVC News, Lagos.
Israeli Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu says a strike on Gaza has killed Hamas leader Mohamed Sinwar. Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu told parliament that tens of thousands of terrorists were also killed. This development comes as the United Nations condemned the US and Israeli-backed aid system in Gaza. Earlier today, at about 28 persons were reportedly killed in Israeli strikes on Gaza in the last 24 hours. And that's the news this hour. For more on the updates we're covering, check out our website, tvcnews.tv, follow us on Facebook, Instagram, and X, at TVC News Andrew. Remember we're streaming live on YouTube at TVC News Nigeria. See you again at 10.
To make everywhere shine, well, well, look at tear pocket again. If they make all your white cloth shine, not be small. And if they summer all the nyama nyama where they cause sickness inside house, use Jic wet the inside sachet, make everywhere set one time, just Jicam. Now is the time to reorganize our food systems.
Now is the time to reorganize our food systems.
The LHP hub, MLM market, grain transit jetty and production hubs will greatly reduce prices of food and make it readily accessible.
We are live from the open market for Apik 10x challenge.
My people, today na? Today, I will show you how the power of new Apik 10x gives your toilet a better cleaning than bleach.
Than bleach?
Yes, oh.
Impossible.
Toilets have stains which bleach cannot clean effectively.
But Apik is thicker and sticks better, which gives 10x better cleaning faster bleach and kills germs.
You cannot say that Apik is better than.
The following is a paid presentation by ShopX TV.
Tired of spending endless hours in a kitchen, struggling with bulky appliances? Cooking should be a delight, not a chore. Tired of messy cleanups from kitchen tools that never seem to perform as expected? Do you wish there was a single solution to handle all your blending, chopping and grinding needs? Introducing the Cook X four in one blender, the ultimate kitchen tool to revolutionize your cooking. It's a food processor, mixer, grinder and blender all in one.
Family in no time.
The Cook X four in one blender is the only blender I use in my kitchen. Its variable speed control lets me achieve the exact texture I need for each dish.
The Cook X four in one blender is now available exclusively on ShopX TV. For a limited time, we're offering an exclusive flash sale with up to 39% off. Call now and get the Cook X four in one blender for 115,950 naira. That's a saving of over 100,000 naira. And remember, you won't just be getting the blender, there is more. Order now and you receive a premium knife set valued at 30,000 naira, absolutely free. We'll also deliver the Cook X four in one blender to your door for free. But hurry, this flash sale is for a limited time only. Stock is running out fast, so don't miss this opportunity to upgrade your kitchen at an unbeatable price. Call now while stocks last.
Proceeding is a paid presentation by ShopX TV.
At TVC News, wherever the big news story is happening, we're geared up to break it. TVC News, first with breaking news.
Hello and welcome to Politics Tonight, where we dig and go beyond the headlines for informed analysis of major political stories in Nigeria. I am precious Amayo. General Yakubu Goan, President Bolatunubu join all the regional leaders to reflect on the journey of ECOWAS in the last 50 years. And tonight we will focus on two issues. And the first is on the midterm review of President Tinubu's policies in the agricultural sector. For this, I'll be speaking with the national coordinator, Nigeria Cotton Society, Olola De Adineye. And later on the show, we'll turn our attention to ECOWAS as a regional community celebrates 50 years of existence. For this, I'll be speaking with former Nigerian Ambassador to Burundi, Ambassador Elijah Yangba. Welcome to the program, everyone. Stay with us. Welcome back, everyone. Let's begin with some political developments. General Yakubu Goan joined other ECOWAS leaders to reflect on the journey and development of the regional block in the 50 years of its existence. President Bolatunubu, as chairman of ECOWAS, promised to galvanize political will and resources to promote growth and development of the region. TVC News State House correspondent Fermi Akondi.
Platform like Ekogo, which strengthen gender reporting.
Goan still has fond memories of the 1975 ECOWAS treaty. He acknowledged the resilience and unity of the regional block.
I can assure you, this was the view since when we started it. Yes, there are military, there are other democratic in the government, but the military are making sure that we do things democratically, but militarily democratic.
Fifty years after the ECOWAS treaty was signed by 15 countries, three countries have opted out of the regional block due to political disagreements.
Beyond commemorating a treaty that was signed in 1975 establishing ECOWAS, there are deeper issues now affecting the regional block, such as poor education, healthcare, insecurity and the big elephant in the room, which is unconstitutional takeover of government. The regional block will have to deal with these issues affecting cooperation and integration in West Africa. Fermi Akondi, TVC News, Lagos.
Now, the National Secretary of the People's Democratic Party, Samuel Ayew, is insisting the party never held a neck meeting. He says the Independent National Electoral Commission was clear on the correspondences and the statutory signatory that is recognized, and anything against that is null and void. Senior reporter Habib Alawal has more.
PDP is not part of the coalition. I said it earlier before the governors made their own statements. I was the first person. I don't know who attended that interview. I said we are not part of the majority.
The contest for power and control of the PDP is throwing up different twists and complexities. This has also raised concerns about the possibility of mending fences and uniting the party ahead of the 2027 general election, with Mr Samuel Ayew alleging that certain forces with selfish interests are knowingly paving the way for the APC.
And nobody can sell a document outside me. They confided themselves. I mean, it was bad I went there for example. After doubting other submissions of people that wanted to find out. Yet, I sent a message because I know that committee of Saraki is still meeting and they were supposed to end up. I now send out a letter signed by me that the neck is postponed pending when the support finalized at this time. So what we had is there was not neck. It was a stakeholder's meeting. Because neck.
Tonight, we'll take a break now. When we return, we'll get right into our fast conversation for tonight. Stay with us.
Doubt and fear doesn't occur at the canvas, it shows in the canvas. It shows the conation of raw ethane material slapped, stroked and molded at a pace provided by the doubt and fear. Every move weighing in the struggle of one to the other, merging the past to the present, brushstrokes of colors seen but not known. For when the whaling stops, the pieces settle down in abject beauty erected for a century of a century. Speaking, advocating, protesting as the archer meant to be.
I'm Maryam Longe. I'm a passionate environment advocate and a published author. I am the founder of collaboration, a businesswoman and a fashion icon. I am a wealth coach and a real estate developer.
I am a Makoraku. I'm a corporate commercial lawyer and an entrepreneur.
Baraka Mudawarhaka. I am Ramatu Shehu Oivo, an entrepreneur and a business coach.
I am the voice of an average Muslim woman. I'm a jabite and a lawyer.
I am a polymath and a serial entrepreneur.
I am Murayyo Afualabi Brown, Managing Director, TVC Entertainment. I'm a media consultant, producer and broadcaster.
The ladies of your view are made of women from different professions, tribes, cultures and religion. Join us every Monday to Friday as we share our views on topical and social issues.
Every major news story is with many perspectives and layered with different levels of impact.
Hello. What time did this happen? We will be right there.
At TVC News, we follow the big and major news, gathering the facts, witnessing the outcomes.
I am here live at the aftermath of the approval of the new national minimum wage.
We are TV station of the year, not just for breaking news, but for being first, fair and accurate. TVC News, first with breaking news.
We will invite all Akwaimoites to arrive to the faith of greatness with our rice agenda.
There is always more to a story than the scrimmated line. The part of a story that is not told casts a shadow. It's like the part of an object that is not reached by light. On TVC News, I'm able to explore the many angles that are to a story, talking to stakeholders, asking the difficult questions and digging for facts. I believe the viewers are able to make a better decision if they're well informed and understand not just the part, but the complete story. TVC News, first with breaking news. TVC News Weekend Lineup. TVC Breakfast Saturday with Kemi Folaadeemo and Emmanuel Ajai. Political Standpoint with Pressures Amayo. Newsweek with Mark Otapo. Politics on Sunday with Fermi Akonde. Community Forum with Sarah Ayyiko. Get ready for the biggest stories, fresh perspectives and burning news discussions that round up the weekend, only on TVC News.
Welcome back, everyone. You're watching Politics Tonight. When President Bolatunubu assumed office in May 2023, one of the sectors he promised to increase productivity was agriculture, thereby increasing food security. Now, two years into his first term, the country is still facing food crisis. Insecurity in rural areas, particularly in food producing states, continue to disrupt agricultural activities. Additionally, extreme weather, including heat waves, droughts and floods, has also made food production increasingly challenging nationwide. But recently, the government rolled out new policies and initiatives to increase food production, drive down prices and tackle the cost of living crisis. However, Nigerians wonder whether the price hikes can be reversed as a hope of relief ties lies there. Now with this in mind, let's speak with the national coordinator of Nigeria Cotton Society, Olola De Adineye. She joins me live in a Lagos studio. Good to have you join us. Good evening.
Thank you for having me. Good evening.
Good evening. So you are very, I mean, you're a major stakeholder in the, in the cotton industry, which is also in the agricultural industry. So I want to begin with a promise that the president made in 2023, which is to revamp the agricultural sector and then boost food security. How well will you say that this administration has fared in that regard?
Thank you. First of all, I'll say that, you know, we've come a long way. You know, Nigeria has come a long way in terms of economy, agriculture, you know, government in, government out. They've been trying different, there've been different interventions, you know, but I've been working with the government for quite some time, not just this government, even the past administration. I was a prime anchor under the Anko Borowa scheme for Central Bank. I, I will say that with my engagement with the government, I can hand on chest say that I see seriousness, I see the willingness.
With this administration.
Administration. You know, as you said earlier, there's been a lot of policies, there've been a lot of, you know, talk, you know, intervention and all that, you know. And with this administration, I'm not just seeing the talk, I'm seeing the walk as well because I've been involved in the discussion and the, the planning behind the scene. You know, let's take all, um, different policies. You look at the food emergency, that, um, the emergency declaration that the president made. When you look at the intervention plan and the strategy plan, you will see different point that talked about, going back to what you said, you know, affordability, availability and sustainability. Yes, you know, that sustainability makes a whole lot of difference. What we have now is a plan that takes us from where we need to start from to get our result in a sustainable manner. There are a lot of things that we were doing wrong when it comes to agriculture. You know, people were pumping in money, but things are not properly done. What this government is doing now is to do it the right way in a way that is sustainable.
And let me come in there because, you know, you mentioned that you were prime anchor for the Anko Borowa program. And that program will understand that a lot of money, you have talked, you've talked about pumping in money, a lot of money was put in, but there, there was no commensurate result. Was that your experience and how is this administration bridging that funding gap?
Thank you. That's exactly what I'm trying to say now. The past administration tried, you know, the Anko Borowa had the good and the bad side because I was part of it, you know, the good side wasn't really properly talked about. You know, the bad side, people talk about that. One of the things I think filled the Anko Borowa was there was no proper monitoring, you know, for this government, they are doing that. You know, when we talk, when we go back to how it should be done, you know, we talked about irrigation, water management, soil analysis, soil assessment and all those things, monitoring and evaluation. If you don't have that in agriculture, you cannot succeed. Now, the government has declared that state of emergency and they have put all these things in place, working with different agencies and different ministries, the Water Ministry, irrigation and all that, you know, it is even now that I understand there's even grants for irrigation, you know. So all those things has to be put in place, you know, for you to have sustainable agriculture. When you go into the farm to plant and you don't understand your soil type, you don't understand either this kind of seed, this soil grows this kind of crop, you plant and you get nothing out. They say, oh, this thing is not working. It's working, we're not doing things properly. So that was this, I'm getting from this administration now. What we're not talking about, the conversation is not about just going into the field and plant. The, the conversation is about doing this properly for availability, affordability, sustainability and easy access, easy access for the farmers. The real farmers now, you know, should have access to funds. We're having conversation as well, you know, the private sector coming together with the public sector. You can leave the government, you know, when it come, they make the policy, you can leave them to say, okay, you've made a policy, then let's go home and stay down. No, we're not going to do that. We have to engage them. And what this government is doing is they're opening up that conversation. For example, I have meeting, I've had several meetings with the Minister of State for Industry and Senator John Enner. We've had several meetings, several stakeholders meeting, several engagement on how this should be done properly. He has asked a lot of question. We've told him things and, you know, when you talk to them.
So they're also trying to get feedback for, from stakeholders?
Yes, they're getting that from stakeholders, you know, we have to, you know, when you do things that, you know, you're not, you've not done properly, that's where you start from. So what did we do wrong? How should we go forward? So there's that engagement and there's that open door for the private sector that understand how this should be done to come in and talk. So for me, I'll say that I see they're not just making policy, you know, the Nigerian, the Nigerian first policy, you know, that lad is my heart, you know. You know, there's blessing in the chaos. We only have to give our chaos time, you know, and be patient with the chaos and see systematic.